I'm so used to Mr. Sterling being the FAB chairman.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry about that. And thanks for the reminder. We did have Mr. Curry Robertson, President of the FRA. Since taking over, he's been making really good strides on improving the functionality of the leadership, I believe, in the organization. He presented us with a report that was done that basically came up with several really good recommendations on how they build on what they've already done and increase their return on investment, kind of, that's the way I look at it, to localities that they represent. They're coming up with metrics, very measurable ways of tracking what they're doing. It used to be, you know, we tracked, "How many visits do you have?" Well, that really doesn't buy you anything, and Mr. Sterling points that out a lot. The metrics that they're developing now are actual outcome-based metrics, so when people ask us, you know, "You fund the FRA with county tax dollars, what are you getting for it?" Now, I think we'll be able to really answer that question. So, that was a very good presentation. Staff did an update on our credit assessment. We're going to be going out for bonds shortly here soon, so they gave us a standing that pretty much we think were at least where we were before, and we're positioned, hopefully, to get a positive outlook and upgrade on one or two of those ratings. They're working on school pay scales, as we've all seen throughout the budget process. It's that big fancy chart that the superintendent showed us, so we're hoping to have some updates on that soon. And the last thing was, the Senate passed a budget, the House passed a budget, and now they're in conference. So, some of the good things coming out of Richmond is actually some good news. They've agreed to state funding for a percent and a half teacher pay raise, including support staff. Now, just to remind the public, that's not every teacher in Stafford, because we provide funding to the school board for about twice as many teachers as the state requires us to, so, but it is a step in the right direction. For local government, they decided to get rid of the $30 million that we call "local aid to the Commonwealth." So, last year when they had a shortfall, they decided that all the cities and the counties would help pay for that. They figured out a way not to do that, so that's a positive as well. And then, they are depositing about $193 million into the teacher retirement fund for VRS, which is a significant thing. We've been lobbying the state to pick up their share and stop relying on the county so much, and they're starting to do that, so the schools will see a cost savings, I think it was $600,000 or something like that. It's a pretty good number. So, there's some positive news out of Richmond. It looks like the budget should pass Thursday. They're gonna, I think, leave it online for two days now, which is a new process. Everybody can read it, and then, all indications are that the governor shouldn't be signing it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Thomas.
I forgot to mention something, may I?
Please.
I'm going to DC tomorrow night to receive an award for the Acquah Landing Beach that was awarded the Best Restored Beach Award. So, that's being put on by the American Shore and Beach Preservation Association, but I thought I should mention that, that we won a national award for our work down there at Acquah Landing.
And I would hope you would bring it back to the next meeting to show everybody.
Yes, I will.
Good, good. A report of the county attorney, and a report of the county administrator.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll ask Mr. Dayton and Mr. Rapp to come forward with your monthly parks and roads updates, please.
Christopher Rapp, Director of Public Works. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I am pleased to provide a road construction update from the Department of Public Works. Mountain View Road, construction is continuing on this project. Currently, new driveway culverts are being installed, and waterline relocation is continuing. The inclement weather has impacted construction. Mountain View Road Phase 2, the project is currently in the initial stages of construction. The contractor has been mobilizing equipment and is performing initial clearing of the site. Poplar Road Phases 1 and 2, construction bids of the project were received and are on the board agenda for next week, March 3, to consider award. Poplar Road and Mountain View Road intersection, the right-of-way acquisition process is underway. 10 properties will be impacted. Brook Road, safety improvements. The right-of-way acquisition is continuing. A total of 24 properties are impacted. Staff has met with property owners, or several property owners, and the land acquisition consultant has met with the property owners as well. Trustlow Road, right-of-way acquisition has been approved for both phases of the project, and negotiations are occurring. Phase 1 utility relocations are actually scheduled to begin in March, and a Pardon Our Dust meeting has been scheduled for March 5 at 7:00 PM at Gale Middle School to inform residents of the upcoming construction. Negotiations continue on the remaining right-of-way in Phase 1 and 2. Garrisonville Road, right-of-way plans continue to be reviewed by VDOT. And lastly, the Courthouse Streetscape, the project is substantially complete, and a punch list of final items has been provided to the contractor, and we are coordinating to schedule the completion of those punch list items. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Mr. Dayton.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Keith Dayton to report on some parks and trail project activity. With the Jeff Rouse Swim and Sports Center, we have our waterline is under construction along with the entrance road. This waterline will serve both the Swim and Sports Center, as well as the Embry Mill Fields. The installation of the building foundation is continuing. We have also experienced some impact from the winter weather. It's hampered ground activity, so hopefully, when things dry out, we'll see some pickup out there as well. With respect to the rectangular fields at Embry Mill Park, the contracts for construction of the rectangular fields and the lights, as well as the final artificial turf surfacing, have been executed. We have a notice to proceed on those contracts for March 2, so we're expecting additional activity to occur out there, and we are anticipating a scheduled opening of spring of 2016 for that facility. The indoor rec center, the Jeff Rouse Swim and Sports Center, the end of this year is still the scheduled opening date. Some trail activity we have underway, Woodstream Trail. We did complete the design to connect Smith Lake Park to three major developments on Stafford Borough Boulevard, Woodstream, the Foxwood Village, and also Sunningdale Meadows. We received six bids. The lowest bid was just under $550,000 by Southwood Builders. There is an action item on the board agenda today. Infrastructure Committee considered this at the February 3 meeting and recommended approval. And if the board decides to proceed, we have a scheduled completion of September 2015 of this year for that trail. Two other trails, Belmont Ferry Farm Phase 4. The Department of Historic Resources did complete the review and determined a finding of no significant impact with respect to environmental impacts related to that project. That's good news, so we are underway. With that, we have a public hearing scheduled for March 9 at 7:00 PM at the Falmouth Fire Station to allow additional public input into that project. And then, as a secondary project, we have received comments from VDOT on the crosswalk near the Belmont Facility. We have completed the revisions to the design, resubmitted to VDOT, and hopefully, we'll have final approval on that, where we can go out and get to bid and have that work completed by the summer. The overall project, Phase 4 trail project is scheduled for completion in December 2016. And finally, the Phase 6 section to take us from the Chatham Bridge out to Ferry Farm. We have an engineering proposal to do the alignment study. Staff has reviewed it, and we're forwarding on to VDOT for their comments. We hope to have the study underway this April. Any questions? I'm happy to try and address them.
Any questions for Mr. Dayton? Thank you, Mr. Dayton.
Mr. Chairman, in honor of Black History Month, we have a special tour tomorrow night at the Rouser Building, 6:00 PM, February 25. Jim Thomas, who's the Director of the Slave Song Project, will be there and will be speaking. And, of course, the building is open daily, and anyone who would like a tour just needs to contact Ms. Porter, and she'd be happy to provide one if they can't make it tomorrow night. There's one addition to the agenda, fire and rescue ratified, winter weather declaration of emergency, and also to terminate that same declaration. And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Meara. Do I hear a motion to, for the addition?
Second, her motion made.
Yep, second. Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Vote passes 6 to 0 with 1 absence. Any member would like to pull anything from consent agenda? Do I hear a motion for the consent?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes 6 to 0 with 1 absence. Item number 17, Human Resources Consider the Revised County Sick Leave Policy.
Mr. Chairman and members of board, this was deferred from the board's last meeting, has been, also been taken up by the board's Finance Audit and Budget Committee. There is a, just very quickly, there were some questions that the board had, which we've answered, and also, we have two resolutions in here, R-15-50, which is the original recommendation, and an alternative resolution, R-15-65. The two are identical, except that R-15-65 would grandfather current employees and the sick leave payout policy for employees hired on or before today would remain unchanged. I would mention that we did put, for R-15-65, there is another version in your add-on folder, because the one that we provided last week had a defective date of February 17, and should the board go forward with that, we'd recommend that it be effective today. Mrs. Wagner is here, if you have detailed questions.
Any questions for Ms. Wagner? What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to propose R-15-65.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Sellers, any discussion?
I have one question. Is the, what's the cost difference estimated to the county between the two, this one and the other?
Essentially, the cost difference would be a reduction in the savings we might realize by the savings. It would amount to a small amount of money. Essentially, the difference is in the grandfathered option. We would not be freezing current sick leave balances as of today's pay.
I know what the difference is. I'm asking if you have a value.
With an assumption of a 2% salary increase, you know, in the initial years, you'd be probably looking at a few thousand dollars difference.
A few thousand dollars difference? Total to the county?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chairman, I mean, that's exactly right. I think the difference between the two is that the liability would be maintained for more years under the grandfather clause, so the initial difference would be minimal. It's about $250,000 a year is what it's currently costing us under the, with the grandfather provision. Obviously, you would have, we would carry the liability substantially longer, because it would be until all of the current employees leave county service. But the impact to the budget next year or the next couple of years is negligible.
Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Thomas, you have a question? I guess, the only question I have, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Cavalier. Oh, Ms. Monkey, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna, if you look at the horizon over the next 15 years, because I remember we were at the school division, we looked at this when we were looking at the bridge program. What is the long-term liability if you look at employees that would be here until they would retire? How is that liability going to change over the next 15 years?
Well, the liability today is 25% of $13 million, so, $3 million and change if everyone were, God forbid, everyone were to leave today.
Okay.
They would have to write the check for $3 million and change. As Ms. Wagner said, it's going to grow by, again, we're just looking into the crystal ball by 1% to 2% a year, depending on how salaries grow. And then, we're making an assumption that folks' leave balances will stay about the same as they are today, so it would be a fairly, if nothing were done, it would continue to grow. If the grandfather clause is put in, then it would expire with the, as employees leave service.
This is...
As, I'm sorry, as the, with the original recommendation, that $3.2 million would be frozen, or whatever it is as of July 1 of this year, that would be frozen, and then over an extended period of time, that would come down. It's difficult to quantify exactly, because we'd have to make some really general assumptions about what raises might be over the next few years, as well as the utilization of sick leave by employees might be. So, it's really hard to get your arms around it.
Yeah, it is. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cavalier?
This basically just honors our commitment to the employees that we currently have on board, that what plan they signed up for is the one that they're going to depart with when they finally do choose to retire. So, I believe that's the right thing to do.
Mr. Milley?
Good. Miss Sellers?
Good.
Mr. Thomas? I agree with Mr. Cavalier. The employees that are here today, this is part, this was the understanding they had with the county, that they would get this sick leave payout at the end of their retirement. And I'll go back to what Mr. Cavalier said at our last meeting, when he's of the federal government, they came up with a similar, a different plan for retirement. And if you were under the old plan, you had the option to stay there, or you had the option to go with a new plan. So, I think it's the right thing to do, and I'll support the resolution. Any other discussion? Please cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion carries 6 to 0 with 1 absence. Item number 18, Planning and Zoning, staff at regional airport compatibility land use plan.
Can I have the computer, please? Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mike Zarath, Principal Planner with the Planning and Zoning Department. I'm joined today by representatives of the Stafford Regional Airport Authority, Airport Staff, Randy Burdette, the Director of Virginia Department of Aviation, and also other planning staff were present to assist in answering operational questions that you might have. This issue is to consider sending the draft Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan as amendment to the comp plan, onto the Planning Commission for a public hearing and recommendation from At your last meeting on February 3, there were several requests for additional information, and I'd like to briefly review those requests. There were questions about the amount of existing planned development in the area that would be affected by this potential plan. The image that you see on the screen highlights the location of existing subdivisions, which are in darker green, and also active or approved subdivisions in lighter green. This totals 150 subdivisions in all. There was a question specifically about the number of subdivisions that might be in areas that require additional review. There are 82 of subdivisions within those areas. Also, there were, was a question specific to the Zone AP3, that's the Outer Approach Zone in blue, and that includes 1,069 existing parcels of land and 684 occupied lots in that larger area. And that is one of the largest areas within this overlay, mainly consisting of larger lot residential developments. Also, we did break out the areas, we broke out the existing dwelling units and potential dwelling units that might be achieved through by right zoning for each sub-area, and then, also, further divided the sub-areas into the areas on the northern and southern sides of the runway approach. So, you see the sub-areas have a new letter code, like H2B or H2A. There, those H2 areas were broken out into the northern and southern, and same with H1 and H3, you can see on the map. Then, along with that, goes along with it is the corresponding table that does provide the existing number of dwelling units, potential dwelling units by, through, that might be achieved for by right zoning, and then, the total projected build-out by what's existing in zoning combined. Just to point out, the southern approach transitional area has the greatest number of existing dwelling units at 986. The northern conical area has the greatest build-out potential with, potential for 3,454 dwelling units. And that, that does assume that every single property gets built out and divided at its maximum potential, which is unlikely, but we do provide this to show what the greatest impact might be. Then, we did break this information, that information, that table out further. There was a desire to find out about the amount of existing and planned growth on each side of the runway, looking at the northern traffic pattern, which is the area circled in green, and the southern traffic pattern circled in red. And in, within these areas, and from the information in the table, you can see that the future residential development potential, the northern traffic pattern would be slightly over 2 times more than the potential in the southern area.
Just to be clear, these are all development rights that exist that are not going to be affected by this plan?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you go back 2 slides, because there were a couple of things that I think I know what they are. One more, please. Okay, there's something down here that I believe, well, let me put my glasses on, but I don't think I can still read it. No, I can't. Okay, there's something over here on the left in the conical area. What does that say?
This...
Yes, thank you.
That is designating, this map is designating some of the larger subdivisions. That's the planned Staffordshire subdivision.
Okay, all right. And what about the other ones over here on the right? That looks like Colonial something.
Yeah, Colonial Forge is in this location, which is currently developing.
Now, that's Colonial Forge, the development, not Colonial Forge High School.
Right, Colonial Forge High School is right above it. It's in this area.
It's right there. Okay, where is Stafford High School on this map? Is it on here?
Yes, this is in this location.
Okay, okay, thanks. That's what I needed to know. I couldn't read those. Thank you.
All right, and then, some of the other larger ones, Leland Station, Embry Mill, and Augustine North.
Okay, thank you.
So, let me ask this question. Everything inside the purple, including the purple, this land use study says no more building, or no more, what does it say? What does it mean to property owners? I guess that's what I'm trying to get at.
Well, actually, in the purple area, in the conical area, residential, many uses are still, are supported in the conical area. Residential uses are considered compatible, because it's the outer edge. There's only a few uses where additional review might be desired, which include really things, uses that have tall structures like cell towers, or heavy manufacturing, if there are large smoke stacks, or something like that. So, in that outer conical zone, most uses would be, would be fine, according to this plan.
But as you get back into the other zones, and I'm a little bit colorblind, so bear with me, but I think it's yellow.
The H3?
You get back into there, then, then it gets more restrictive, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So, how much, and this may be an unfair question, how much property is being affected here?
In total?
And if you don't have that answer right now, I know I put you on, it's an unfair question for you to catch a spur of the moment. You can get that answer back to us.
Did a lot of different analysis, but don't have the total number of, you're looking at acreage.
Acreage, yeah.
Don't have that...
That's okay. That's okay. I don't want to belabor the point. If you get time sometime in the next week or so, if you can get that back to the board, I appreciate it. My, where I'm going with this, my concern is, right now, the amount of profit that's going to be affected, the number of property owners that are going to be affected, and quite honestly, it looks like they're going to be affected without compensation, but that's, that's something else we can talk about.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes, Mr. Thomas?
To piggyback on that with some answers. The only 2 categories that say absolutely no houses are, according to page 243 here, single-family is not compatible with AP1, which is right there before the runway, it's that little gray box, which makes sense to all of us, I think. And then, also, T, the transitional zone, which is literally right around the airport.
Right.
So, that's airport property now.
Right.
Currently, in this recommendation, I was actually afraid that it would come out like you just said, like, okay, sorry, you're near the airport, no development whatsoever. I was pleasantly surprised at the last meeting to see all the levels of detail that go into each one of these. And a lot of those for residential, it says, you know, it may actually be compatible, but just, you need a staff review to double-check it. So, I think that was much less restrictive than I thought it was going to be. Now, when airplanes are turning, you know, there's certain zones where the statistical, you know, for an accident there in a turning is lower, so those are a little bit more restrictive, and that seemed to make sense as well. So, from that perspective, I was happy with what they came up with so far.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Milley?
In the statement that, in this area, no more building of houses, that's not, it's not accurate. Just to be clear, there's 14,424 by right units there that we have no control over. This plan, no matter what we do, will not affect those 14,424 units that could be built out. It just says, it just recommends to us that we shouldn't upzone that for any more higher density. It's very different than what, than kind of how you stated it. I just want to be, am I right about that?
Correct. This is a comp plan change that is proposed, so it is just a guide. It doesn't, and it really is going to be in effect when somebody's coming in to rezone their property. So, it doesn't take away what rights they have now.
Do you think 14,424 houses is enough in this area? Is the question, because that's what we're going to get.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Monkey, and I'll come back to Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, on my way to Seattle this past weekend, I read this entire report, and, and this is the most important page of this entire report, and I just want to make sure, the way I read it, under H1 and H2, it's saying that residential property is discouraged, or building is discouraged there, but it could be under additional review. And, you know, this, this document and this chart is really the guiding, the guiding document for this entire compatibility study. Is that correct, Mr. Zarath?
Correct. I would say that's a fair assumption.
Thank you.
Sorry, I had that, my last point was, that big purple ring is a scary ring. There's a lot of property underneath that. If you cross-reference that, here's the things that it says are absolutely compatible and no review. All types of residential, single-family, multifamily, group living, transient lodging, hotels, things like that. Commercial, low-rise office, high-rise office. The only thing that it says you cannot put in those purple rings is a processing plant for agricultural, and actually, that's reviewable. Heavy industrial, industrial, which is reviewable, and then, vertical infrastructure like towers, again, common sense things. So, there's really no restrictions in that purple, even though that's the big scary, to me, that was the biggest one. I was like, woo, what are they saying there? There is no restrictions in that one.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Zarath.
Just a few more points. There are also questions about the effect that cluster development might have, and staff would point out that the cluster regulations wouldn't really pose a conflict in, with this type of, of what's recommended in this plan. Cut cluster regulations are going to usually require additional open space to be provided, which is actually a guideline that's, that's encouraged for residential development in, in several of these sub-areas. We did receive some more detailed responses, which we provided to you from the Regional Airport Authority representatives on some of these points. There were questions about the standard traffic pattern and what level of safety that would bring, and would it bring, make the airport operations more safe? And the short answer is yes. To provide a little more information on that, the, the response points out that the non-standard pattern, which is all the planes flying on one side of the runway... pattern, which is all the planes flying on one side of the runway, would have, create a risk of midair collision potentials on the southwest side of the runway. This would occur as two planes from opposing directions might enter this circulation pattern going against each other or towards each other. And if there's any visibility or communication issues or problems, they may not be aware of each other's presence in this area.
Ms. Sellers.
How many times a year do two planes crash each other head on?
Well, I don't have that info, but I may defer to.
I mean, is this something we, I, I would imagine, and I grew up, I grew up on military, on an Air Force base, and I have never heard of planes crashing into each other in the midair. But it probably happens, but I'm just saying, is that a reason for us to do something, Mike? Not always.
If I might just address that quickly, it's very infrequently, but if you recall, just last year, we had a midair near the Culpeper Regional Airport between two small planes. So it does in fact occur. The way the traffic patterns are set up is to de-conflict the traffic. And so at a non-towered airport where you don't have a tower controller directing airplanes to land on a particular runway, that potential exists. And so aviation is all about risk management, and by reinstating a standard traffic pattern, we reduce that, albeit slight risk, but we do provide it less risk by having traffic operating on different sides of the runway.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Thomas.
A further clarification, something that does happen a lot more often, has happened to me back when I used to fly. If you were approaching our airport and it was a day where there was just a little bit of wind, what you do in order to figure out which way to go is you fly over the airport higher than the traffic pattern, and you look down and there's this little orange sock, and you kind of make your decision up. It's completely up to you. You don't even have to have a radio in your airplane, by the way. Most of us do. But it's completely up to you whether you go the right way or the left way. And it has happened that on a day like that, there might be a guy who's, decides to go left, and hopefully he tells everybody that, but he doesn't have to. And I might decide, well, for me, I don't get to land that way very often because the wind is always coming from the other way. I'm going to practice this landing. And even though they don't collide midair, it happens often where you have people in the pattern the wrong way. And there's nothing to prevent that. So, and that's what we currently have. That risk is there, and I think that's what they're talking about, de-conflicting. If you had both traffic patterns, that would never happen. You would never have two airplanes in the same airspace going at conflicting opposite ways.
So I guess my question would be, and not to you, Mike, but to, I guess, the authority. If it is unsafe today, it has been unsafe for 13 years, correct?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could address that very quickly. As I said, aviation is a very, an activity that requires a lot of risk management. And when the airport was first constructed, one of the other risks that was looked at was the potential for bird strike hazard due to the bird attractant of the landfill. And it was determined, because bird strikes are of much more frequent nature than midair collisions, that the chance of an incident occurring because of bird strike was much greater than the potential for midair collision. But now that, that cell has been closed and that hazard has gone away, now we're left with the single hazard of opposing traffic in the same pattern. So we've been operating this way, we've, we've been very lucky and we've had good operations there, and we've not had an incident. But every day that we continue now to operate, we're still operating at some risk with that there. Reopening the standard traffic pattern would further reduce that risk.
Well, I appreciate that, and I'm not going to get into this discussion now because we, all we're going to do now is just send this down to the planning commission. But I live in that southern pattern. It's kind of disturbing to me that I've been living on an airport flight path for 13 years, as have my constituents, when there has been a risk. And that is very disturbing to me. But we'll talk about that another time. Mr. Rife, go ahead.
Okay, just to finish up the presentation, also, there were questions about the ratio of, of uses for operations that, regarding the, the amount of planes that approach the runway from the east and west. The, the Airport Authority points out that approximately 70% of the operations primarily use the approach into the, the runway from the, from the east, from, from King George County, with the remaining 30% of operations using the runway that heads over from the west. And, and correspondingly, that was related to the question of how much traffic might use the northern traffic pattern when that's opened, or if that's opened. And 30% of the traffic then would also probably, there'd be 30% of the operations using that northern traffic's pattern side of the runway. Also, the last point, there, there are questions about the types of planes, the, the mapping we show inner and outer traffic pattern lines. And the inner traffic pattern is specifically the type of plane would be four to six seat propeller driven planes and helicopters. And the outer traffic pattern are for larger and faster turboprop and jet aircraft and...
Mr. Milley.
That, that wasn't the question, actually. The question was the frequency of use of the outer pattern. That's what I, we wanted someone to speak to that that was, that knew about it. Because I've, I've never seen anyone use an outer pattern in an airport this size. I'm sure they do, but I, and I use airports.
Ed Wallace, Airport Manager. At the current time, we enjoy about 70 operations of our larger aircraft, the aircraft that would normally use the outer pattern. These are your jet aircraft, your turboprop aircraft, some of your larger twin aircraft. Approximately 30% of those would be on the northern side. The remaining 70% would be on the southern side. So of the 70 at the current time, you're only looking at 30% of that, which is what, 21 aircraft on the northern side.
I thought you just bought the guest lowest property and cleared it so that you could have a, have these guys come straight in from the east.
That, that is correct.
That they're not using the outer flight pattern.
That, if you, it depends on now, as a pilot, depends on how you get into the pattern. But I am not a pilot. I would defer that to one of the pilots present.
I mean, when I say straight in, they don't get into a pattern.
Yes, sir.
They can, they come straight in.
If, if an aircraft is flying the precision instrument approach, which comes in from the King George area, if, say, the winds are out of the south, they're shooting that approach because it is the, the only precision approach that we have to the runway. If the winds were significant and they wanted to then maneuver to land on, to the south on runway 15, that's when that aircraft would then maneuver to use that. If the winds are light, less than five knots generally, they may accept the fact that they're landing with a tailwind and going to require more runway to land safely. If it's above the five knot and, and getting up to the 10 knot area, that's when they would make the decision to fly the pattern around to the other side and land in the opposite direction.
I've also noticed that when I fly into that airport, I'm coming in from the east most of the time. It may be a total coincidence, but are the winds usually prevailing? Those, are those usually prevailing winds?
As, as Ed said, the, the wind studies, and historically, it's about 70% of the winds favor the 3-3 approach, which is to the north, and then about 30% of the time it favors the, the 1-5 approach.
Let me see if I understand, it's about 70 aircraft right now?
70 out of every 100 is 70%.
70% of the aircraft are, no, I, I didn't hear that. 70% of the aircraft are flying, would fly the outer pattern? No, I didn't think so.
Not, no, 70, if you take, 70% of the traffic coming into the airport is going to land on runway 3-3, based on prevailing winds.
Okay, I got that.
Okay, if you took now of, of those aircraft that then have to circle to land, about 21 of those, 30% of those aircraft are going to be your larger turboprop jet aircraft. So they would be the, the ones using the outer pattern to make that maneuver to land on runway 15.
What percentage of the, of the planes flying in would use the outer pattern if, if they couldn't come straight in?
That would be about 21%.
21%. But then how many of the times does that 21% actually get into the outer pattern? How many times do they come in straight?
That would be, if you look at historically the winds, do you have the number?
No, I don't.
Yeah, it'd be based on the winds being less than that five knots or eight knots of, of wind, and they make that decision. It's entirely a subjective decision by the pilot as to whether the winds are acceptable and low enough to accept the tailwind landing.
What's been happening, I understand why.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Bunkie.
Yeah, it looked like Mr., Mr. Burdette might have had something to add when, when you had raised your, your point that you were upset about the fact...
I'd rather not discuss it now because we're just going to send this down to planning commission, and that, that subject will come back up at a later date.
Okay.
Ms. Sellers.
I have a question, comment too, or I guess it could be a comment. In the, in the report, it says the TDR program and encouraged the use of TDR, particularly when it's in the, if we pulled back up that map thing. Yeah, it does. It says in there to use the TDR program. Am I right? Transfer Development Rights. But we're going to hear a public hearing on TDRs later, and in the map that we have, the comprehensive plan amendment has nothing about this area. It says H1B.
The APTB has about a third of the Crowsnest Harbor in it.
Well, I, I get the Crowsnest Harbor, but what I'd like to consider is if, if this is something we're going to do and staff is recommending, you know, encouraging the use of TDR, why don't we look at putting some of this into the TDR program as, as a sending area?
And we did consider that for the Quantico, some of the Quantico operations at one point, then we shrunk the program down.
But I just haven't, I, I, it's not on the comprehensive plan amendment for TDRs, but it's a recommendation in the airport compatibility study, so.
Mr. Zarek, have you concluded your presentation?
Yes.
Do you have another comment?
Well, that's just in there as, as a suggestion and, and whether, you know, there would be additional comp plan amendments that would be needed if, if this, TDRs were to be considered here as well, so.
Yeah, I would think, what you're saying is if this passes and, and then we go to another comp plan.
Right, right, right. But yeah, that, that ends my presentation.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, Mr. Rife?
Just because I don't know the answer. That third of Crowsnest Harbor, is that type of development compatible with that zone? I think it might be, I just wasn't sure, the, the light blue zone.
A B, APTB? It is compatible in that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a resolution to send this to planning commission. Do I have a motion?
I move for R1575.
I'm second. Motion to seek your votes. Tell of the votes. Motion passes 6 to 0 with one absent. We will skip over item number 19, which is staff at Regional Airport, proposed resolution 15-41, as Mr. Sterling, it is his resolution, he hasn't arrived yet. We will go to item number 20, fire and rescue, authorize a county administrator to apply for a SAFER, for staffing for adequate fire and rescue known as a SAFER grant. Chief Lockhart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mark Lockhart, County Fire and EMS Chief, here today to discuss with you the potential for the county to apply for a staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant from the Federal Emergency Management Administration. You have before you a board package which briefly outlines our, our purpose in applying for this grant. The SAFER program has been around for a number of years. Essentially, they fund two different types of categories, hiring of firefighters and recruitment, retention of volunteer firefighters. Under the hiring of career firefighters, there are three priorities that are outlined there. The rehiring of laid off firefighters, the retention of firefighters who are facing layoff or filling a vacancy, vacancies through attrition which have not been filled due to economic circumstances. And the third priority is the hiring of new firefighters. The program priorities are discussed further within the funding opportunity announcement that you have in the board package. This grant will cover salary and benefits, including actual payroll expenses, the initial training of the recruit academy, and costs for overtime included in the base salary that meets Fair Labor Standards Act guideline requirements. The performance period for this grant is 24 months, which begins immediately following a six-month recruitment period for the hiring of those firefighters. We have done further research and, and development with this particular project, and we have developed three different options that I would cover with you just briefly now. And option one, that would be for the hiring of 16 full-time career firefighters that would be used to provide a minimum four-person staffing on all four of our career-staffed engines and to assist in covering service gaps with volunteer service units when needed. The total on that amount for the 24-month grant period is $2,285,428. And option two, we're looking for the hiring of 21 firefighters that would again provide the minimum four-person staffing on all four career engines, as well as daytime staffing coverage for engine 10 or station 10 at Potomac Hills. The salary and benefits total for that 24-month grant period is $2,999,624. Option three is the hiring of 32 full-time firefighters, again, the minimum four-person staffing on career engines, a fifth full-time suppression apparatus, and daytime staffing for another engine. The total on that 24-month amount is $4,570,856. In looking at this, we would, would offer those three options to you. As I expressed to the Public Safety Committee earlier today, our preference is for option two. We believe that that provides us the best bang for the buck. It allows us not only to address the minimum four-person staffing under this grant, but as well to give us the additional staffing at station 10 in that area during the daytime when the population and call volume is at its highest. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Chief Lockhart?
Mr. Chairman?
Milley. Oh, I'm sorry.
If I may just, Chief, I think it's important to clarify that the numbers you were, were working from were the adjusted board, the corrected board package, please.
Yes, sir, thank you. The numbers that were provided in the initial background report were incorrect. There was a formula error in the spreadsheet that we had used originally, and we provided that updated background report with the numbers that I just reported to you. That was my error and I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Milley.
So in the past, when we've done these, my understanding is that we get free money in the beginning, but then we have to maintain those levels after a while? Is that not the case?
No. Mr. Milley, there was a change to the grant program two or three grant cycles ago. You're correct, the last grant that we had did require the county to cover that third year. In this particular case, the grant performance period is two years. There is no obligation for the county to maintain those positions after that time. Obviously FEMA hopes that you will do that, but there is no obligation for us to do so.
And it's unrealistic that we would reduce our force after we have those people in place. The question is, is this, which one of these fits into the realistic projections based on our direction to you to keep taxes flat? I'm just wondering if we, in three, three years, where we're going to be with this, if we're setting ourselves up? And I guess I'd have to direct that to Anthony, Mr. Chairman, but he, I don't know that he can answer it, but you, you...
Well, the, I, I think it's, I think it's absolutely the right question. I don't have the crystal ball, nobody does. Our estimates are that each of these positions would cost us about $75,000. That's fully loaded pay and benefits in that third year and beyond. So if you go with that option, option two, it's going to be in the neighborhood of, of an ongoing cost of about $1.6 million, which at today's budget, it's about $260 million. So that's, you know, about two-thirds of a percent of our, of our growth. So we are forecasting, you know, that we'll continue to grow at about 2%. So it is a good portion of that growth if there is no change in the, in the tax rates. That's really, at this point, it's about the best answer I could.
Let me make sure I understand, you're, you think the, it's close to having a growth, natural growth, projected, projected growth of the county to support it? Is that what you just said?
Well, our, what's our estimate is about 2% a year in the budget. We're estimating, we're estimating that our long-term growth in the budget would be about 2% a year, which would be roughly $5 million. Now, we all know that's not going to happen in '16, FY '16, that, that growth number is considerably lower than that. But on an ongoing basis, we anticipate it'd be about 2%, which would be roughly $5 million. So this would be a significant portion of that, any, any of the options would be.
And does the sheriff, I can't, there's also a similar sheriff type of program. Is he coming in next, next meeting to ask for the same thing?
I'm not aware of any cops grant solicitations, which is the, pretty much as close as, as you get on the law enforcement side to the, to the SAFER grant. I can tell you that we're certainly not nervous about bringing those forward to the board. The last one we did was how we got the, the, actually it was a state grant, but we got the seed money for the middle school, school resource officers. I'm not aware of any, I'll, I'll double check with Sheriff Jack, Mr. Milley. I'm not aware of any that are coming quickly at least.
Ms. Bunkie, you're on, so Ms. Sellers.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chief Lockhart, could you maybe explain to them the, the deadlines that we're up against for the SAFER grant, please?
Yes, ma'am. The grant application period opened on February 9th, and it closes on March 6th, which is a week from Friday. And we, our intent obviously was to bring this to you last week, and with the, the weather delay, we've, we've been pushed back. Our only concern at this point is that the Department of Homeland Security is facing a, a potential furlough as of Saturday morning, and we know from news reports that the part of that furlough would involve folks in the grants directorate. as of Saturday morning, and we know from news reports that the part of that furlough would involve folks in the grants directorate office. So that if we have any questions or issues in trying to file the application, we're, we're gonna get a constantly ringing phone. We're not gonna be able to reach anybody if that furlough occurs. Now, that being said, again, the grant application period is open until March sixth. We've asked for clarification on an applica, or extension of the application deadline should that furlough occur. As you can imagine, we've received two different answers, and they're in direct conflict with each other. So my guess is, at least on, on past experience, in a situation like this, they would potentially extend that application deadline, but we, we cannot confirm that.
You wanna give your staff committee report now, or do you wanna wait?
I'll wait.
Okay, Ms. Sellers.
We had some discussions after the public safety meeting, and specifically talked about what's the difference between option one and option two. And option two would allow us to put, at least for the two years, allow us to put an engine during the day at station ten, which is right there by Quantico Corporate Center. And so to see if that helps out with some of the call volume, particularly in that area, and it would help us mend some bridges with Quantico maybe. And so that might be helpful for the next two years, and why, I, I think it, and I'm considering and probably will support option two over option one, just because if we can get that there for two years, maybe mend some bridges with Quantico and have a good faith, and it costs us nothing.
Mr. Cavalier.
Right, that would allow us in the northern part of the county to have some daytime coverage, which we currently do not have any daytime coverage at Potomac Hills. And there's, there's no daytime coverage out in, in Wildwater either. So this not only would service the, the Route one ninety-five corridor, even down to six-ten, but also the whole Wildwater Peninsula would be serviced by this particular staffing. So I would support option two over option one simply because of that. The difference is, what, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for those two options? But I think that it meets a need that we currently have.
Mr. Thomas.
Last time we did a SAFER grant, how many firefighters was it?
The original grant application was for fourteen, and the board chose to accept seven of them.
That was gonna be my question. So if we ask for twenty-one, we could always come back later and choose less than that, right? Or is this different this time?
You, you could, the, that would result in us having to go back to FEMA and ask them to rescore the application based on that, that new number, and at that point, they could decide either they're gonna fund it or they're not going to fund it.
So last time I had me rescored two, and it was okay?
It, it was. We did pose that question to one of the grant representatives at FEMA. They, their encouragement to us was to be as realistic as possible in our initial grant request to try to avoid that situation.
Realistic, that's a good question. How much is this equipment for these additional twenty-one firefighters? Training and equipment costs are gonna be absorbed within the operating budget?
The onboarding costs that we currently have, as far as the recruit academy goes, are absorbed within the, within the department's current operating budget. That total is approximately fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
That's for equipment, too?
That, that would include their initial protective gear and, and everything that they need coming into the academy.
For twenty-one people? I remember we bought new breathing devices not that long ago, and it was a big million dollar number. Again, how many was that for? That was for the entire?
Oh, yes, sir. That, that replaced everything we had in the county.
And how many would that be?
Uh, that was over two hundred and fifty harnesses, I believe.
Okay, so that's a scale of ten, so this number is one point four. So what we spent on those breathing devices last time was more than a two-point, something, right? Just for breathing devices, I'm just trying to get a understanding of why that cost is so low for the new equipment.
Well, because the, the, the new devices that we purchased, those are not assigned to individuals. Those are assigned to seated positions on the apparatus. So when they come into the recruit academy, they are assigned breathing apparatus. That, that doesn't belong to them personally, that's assigned to them for Easter in the academy.
So it just come out of an inventory that you have now?
Correct.
Okay, so it's good to know that we have a little bit of extra equipment for at least twenty-one firefighters currently, right?
Yes, that included replacements, so that we've got equipment in the academy.
Okay. Debt service is going up this year by, is it one point nine million? It's either one point six or one point nine, I don't remember the number off the top of my head.
That's about right between the county and the schools, yeah.
In our three-year plan, do we know what the next two years look like for debt, debt service increase? Rough numbers is fine.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Mary O'Parrott, Chief Financial Officer. Mr. Thomas, for FY seventeen, we're looking to about similar increases as we're facing for sixteen. After that, it does taper off slightly because of some reduced borrowing.
So if it's one point nine next year, a slight taper, let's say.
It'd be about a million, million and a half range.
Okay. So what, I think what we need to understand, we're, we're all for more firefighters. But in that year that these numbers will be hitting our budget, we already have a one point five million dollar bogey before we even get there, because we can't change our debt service. And we were told that we have a five million dollar hopefully growth. Remember this year, they said that's gone, so there's no growth. So we're already looking at thirty-some percent of that growth that's hopefully gonna happen is already spent. So I'm just really trying to be cautionary as far as pre-spending money, because trust me, once we put an engine there, and it sounds like it's needed, once we put an engine there, even though we're not required to keep it, it'll never go away. And we're gonna have to figure out how to pay that one point six million dollars two budgets from now, on top of the one point five in debt service. So whatever we do now is, is really gonna impact that budget two years from now. So as long as we keep that in mind, then I'm, I'm comfortable.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, please, Mr. Thomas, I just want to clarify, the fourteen thousand, five hundred figure I provided you, that is per recruit. That's the onboarding cost per recruit.
That makes more sense. I was like, man, that's cheap.
Mr. Milde.
Sometimes engines and rescue squads go away. They go away from, they went away from Brook.
Well, yes.
So what, they went to Rock Hill. Which one of these plans puts, puts a rescue squad and staff back in at Brook, any of them?
At, at this time, no, sir, they do not.
And I was gonna, you said it better than I would about that. We are, we've heard that even our public works projects, or our, our parks projects and our road projects anticipated additional funding in a few years out. We're getting, we're running out of money for those two, and then of course, the tax, the tax on gas that we use from PRTC to pay for road projects is also shrinking a little bit. So we have a lot of stuff coming together in a few years. We, and we don't even know how we're going to continue. We've been told we're gonna have to pull off road projects, and the only, the only place to go get that, go get that money, of course, is in the same pot that you're talking about. So there really are some serious constraints coming down the road. I, I, that concern me. I don't know how we pay for everything. It's gonna be a first come, first served. This is, this one, this one gets in pretty early.
Ms. Bumpkin.
Yes, I just wanted to say that at our public safety meeting, we voted in favor of option one. Now, as Ms. Sellers indicated, she, there was a sidebar conversation with one of the fire staff after that meeting, and they were discussing the, the Potomac Hills. I, I personally was in favor of option one when it was originally at the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually and the one point seven million. I understand, you know, there was a, an error, a typo in the numbers, and, you know, the two point two million is a lot more difficult to absorb than the previous number. There's no doubt about it. We do have needs in the department, I, I will say that. I mean, if you look at our staffing, or our fire, our volunteer efforts and what they're looking like across the county right now, our efforts are down just like everywhere else in the nation. I'm, I, I know we have concerns up at Potomac Hills, but we also have Quantico helping us out a lot. And I, I feel like we need to understand more, because I've heard good and, I, I've heard two different conversations with regard to, Quantico likes helping us, because then their fire people receive a lot of training on the job, and if they don't come into Stafford County, then they really don't get a lot of experience, because they don't have a lot happening on the base when it comes to fires. And there seems to be a lot of debate back and forth on that. You know, if we defer this till the next meeting, could, would we have the opportunity to gather more information from Quantico on this? Because I, there's a huge difference between option one and option two. And then as Mr. Milde indicates, we also have the concern of, of Brook, because we have done a pilot program over there, which has been very successful, I might add. Any thoughts on that?
Have you given committee report yet? You did give that, okay, fine. Before we have any more, this is a question-answer period right now, so before we get into any more discussion, I need a motion, unless there are other questions. Are there any other questions concerning this subject for the chief? Seeing none, I'll entertain, entertain a motion. And then we'll go back to discussion.
A motion to defer until next meeting.
I have a motion to defer until next meeting. You'll have a second. I have a second. End of discussion.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Milde.
I sit on the, on the Quantico Executive Steering Committee with the Colonel, and I, I have somehow missed the conversations about how Quantico is unhappy serving North Stafford. Now, that doesn't mean they're not, they don't exist. Fire, we're talking about Fire and Rescue Court. But I, I, I too agree with you, I don't have any, I don't have the right context here. Well, I don't know what, that Quant, I don't know that Quantico is complaining. You mentioned it last night at FAMPO, and I had not heard that before, and I, I definitely need some clarification on that. And if we have two weeks to get it, barring any.
We have a week.
Week.
A week. Anytime.
Any other discussion? I have a motion to defer. All in favor, cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion carries seven to zero.
Who's going, who's gonna be tasked with getting that information? I could do it, try to do it myself through the.
I, I would ask the county administrator to get that information.
And Tim Barudy works with them as well.
In light of Mr. Sterling just getting here, I'm gonna take a five-minute recess.
[Crosstalk 00:01:59]
No vote.
Second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Item number twenty-five, Declaration of Emergency-
Emergency Declaration.
Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Getting back on regular schedule?
Mr. Chair, there's the second one. To turn it back off.
I'm sorry, there's the second one, and that is to turn it off. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Item number nineteen. Stafford Regional Airport Proposed Resolution R-15-41. Mr. Sterling.
Mr. Chairman, I think we've discussed this, debated this, gone through it. We've heard from the airport authority, we've heard from people outside about the dangers that this poses to residents, public buildings that are underneath the flight plan. My resolution would express opposition to expanding that northern or going forward with the northern pattern, as well as expanding another thousand feet. I know some people have talked about, well, it's an economic engine. We haven't seen that. What we see is continued subsidies from the taxpayers, not only in the capital costs and going forward with expanded capital costs, but in the annual operating costs. We've been told that if we just get rid of the airplane tax, that this place will thrive, and we won't have subsidized it anymore. That hasn't proven to be the case. If we put money into the fueling station, that'll draw people. That hasn't been the case. If we put in a new terminal, give them the money, which ended up being an interest-free, no-term loan, I mean, that is, I wish I could get that from my mortgage company, but they got it from the taxpayers. And again, we continue to see that we have to subsidize it. Now, we see them coming in and discussing how dangerous it is for anybody who lives under the flight path, that there is potential for accidents. We see what happened up in Maryland, where a plane did indeed crash into homes and it killed people on the ground. And I think this board needs to take a position on behalf of the residents of Stafford County in opposition to its further expansion. My resolution would do that.
Are you putting it in the form of a motion?
I move the motion, or I move the item.
Do we have a second? Ms. Sellers, second. Do I, end of discussion. Mr. Thomas.
I'm not gonna state my reasons again. That was a pretty good laundry list. I think I've rebutted some of those, maybe not all of those. You know, looking at the map, I don't wanna go through pulling the map back up, but if you look at the map, it's got the rings on it now. On a thousand-foot extension, the gray ring that's there now is a thousand feet. So, if you get time, look at it. Move that ring to the left by the width it already is now. It's really not that much of an expansion. We've already talked about, you know, lowering the risk by opening up the northern flight pattern. So, I just can't come up with any other good reasons why I could not, you know, support letting the airport continue. The biggest of which is, none of these expansions, as far as the hundred or thousand feet goes, will be done without public input at the public hearings that are gonna have to come for those. So, there's gonna be plenty of time for public opposition.
Ms. Sellers, I think was next. Mr. Sterling, I'll come back to you.
Mr. Sterling, I'd like for you to consider removing the extension of the runway. And here's why. We met with the airport authority, and I'll support not expanding the northern flight pattern. It's not your house under it, it's actually my house under one of those things, but the extended runway allows some of the current pilots, the current planes that we have there, to make it all the way to the West Coast, is my understanding. So, that is kind of a driving economic thing for them, and we do lose some revenue because they have to stop in Nevada and some other places. They can't make it all the way to California. So, I would ask for you to consider a friendly amendment.
Mr. Sterling.
So, I would accept such a friendly amendment if it meant that we would eliminate that northern pattern. I mean, Mr. Thomas just outlined the risk that's involved in this, and that that risk will now be extended to some communities that are in northern, that are in the northern, under the northern pattern. They're not even my community, they're not even in my district in all cases, but they are Stafford residents. It is up in Embry Mill, it is at Colonial Forge, it's at Colonial Forge High School. It is on behalf of the people of this county as a whole that we need to be concerned, not concerned about a few pilots, and even those that, well, we might lose a little bit of revenue because they're gonna refuel in St. Louis or Nevada or wherever they are. If we were to eliminate that northern pattern, I would accept that if we had the votes to eliminate that northern pattern. But if all we're doing is just gonna go forward with the extension of the runway, and we're also going to have that northern pattern, I'd be extremely concerned because we just keep putting good taxpayer money, even if it's not county money. This is federal taxpayer money that goes into that extension. What do we really get for it as an American taxpayer? What are we really getting for it? Some pilots may be able to get all fuel and not have to go, and not have to refuel on the way to the West Coast. But if the taxpayers get put on the hook for some convenience of a few, that's the part that concerns me, is it's the convenience of a few is imposing a risk and imposing a quality-of-life impact, a negative one, on the people of this county and the people of the country when you look at the cost to subsidize this airport, not just on an operating, but on a capital basis. And so, I'm concerned about it. If there is consensus that we could be done with this with just going forward with limiting the northern route, I will set aside my concerns on the extension of the runway. But it would have to be that we've got the northern route eliminated.
Any other discussion? Ms. Bompy.
Yes, and Mr. Sterling wasn't here for this part when Mike Zaraf went over the airport compatibility standard that we're sending down to the Planning Commission. But, you know, we were looking at where Stafford High School is located and a couple of other developments, and they're all in the Conical area. And I met with the airport, because I wanted to understand this better myself. And, you know, I think then if we're gonna go that route and not open the northern runway, because from what I understand, it's a safety issue, then maybe we should look at closing the airport down, you know? And I know you would probably agree with that.
It was built in exactly the wrong place for the people of this county.
Right, but we are where we are today, and it is an economic engine. And from what I understand, all the spaces out there are all occupied. They weren't occupied before. The tax has been eliminated, and, you know, I'm totally in favor of the expansion of the airport and in the northern pattern, because I think that we're doing ourselves a disservice right now by not having that pattern open.
Ms. Sellers.
Another comment. And just to remember that we have no control over what the airport does. All this is basically us taking a political stance on something and saying, we recognize what happened in Maryland. We recognize that when this happened in Maryland, all those people around that airport in Maryland said, "We are concerned about this." And so, I think we're being a little proactive here and saying, "We recognize there's a risk, and we're letting the airport know that we recognize there's a risk, and we would like them to take that into consideration. We can't control what the airport does." They're gonna do what they're gonna do. They are completely independent of us. This is just us making a political statement to tell, and not a partisan statement, a political statement, and saying, "We are putting our residents first and those safety concerns," and putting it out there. That's why I'm supporting it. I have no other reason to support it than that.
Mr. Sterling.
Ms. Bompy. You talked about it being an economic engine. The truth is, an engine drives things, it pulls things. This is an anchor. It's dragging things, it's stopping things, it's costing us money, it's not driving us, it's not leading to anything. If it was, you'd see thriving industry around the airport. It's not. We got one building. And it's just not driving the things that we've been told, promised, pledged over the years that it would lead to. It's not. It's failing. It is, the way it is being operated as essentially, in my opinion, a flying club rather than an economic engine, it's failing. Now, I hear what you're saying about Stafford High School and the challenges there. I understand that, but that doesn't mean we expand that to Colonial Forge High School and put it in the same sort of condition. I think that we should be looking at, why do we build it there? And should it be moved somewhere else before we start sinking millions and millions of additional taxpayer dollars into this facility if it indeed is posing that risk? It is posing a risk, we know that. We can't sit there, especially after what happened in Maryland, and say, "Oh, no, there's no problem, there's no risk." There's a risk. We've seen a plane crash here. Fortunately, a plane did not crash into homes here like it did up in Maryland, but these things do happen. The airport was built in the wrong place. The airport is not being operated in a way that's leading as an economic engine. I know reports will come out and say, "Well, we got this." Show me the jobs. Don't show me a study that says, "Well, it's got this job and these jobs," you know? Show me the actual people. Give me the names of, I think they've cited a hundred and twelve jobs. Give me a hundred and twelve names of people who are employed today as a result of the airport. You're not gonna find that. You're gonna find some, not a hundred and twelve, and I'll be lucky if you see a dozen. So, I really think that we need to take a stand against the expansion of this airport, against further, I mean, this is crony capital. We're just putting money into this facility, and we're getting no return for the taxpayers, the people who are being charged, whether it's on their gas tax or otherwise, for the, for this facility to continue to operate in the fashion in which it's being operated. Let's take a stand against the imposition of the risk and the quality-of-life damage that this airport is posing to the residents of Stafford County. Where there are elected representatives, and they need to know and they need to hear from us, that this indeed is a problem, and that we are recognizing that problem, and we are trying to take action to minimize that problem.
Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Chair, I agreed to the deferral last time because we were getting into a lot of technical details, and while I may have this much credibility as a pilot who used to fly an airplane a while ago, I ask that we actually have people here that represented the authority who could speak to it. And I was trying not to inject them into the conversation, but there's been an awful lot of accusations about no impact to the economy, and none of us know those real numbers, but they do. They know what the impact is. So, I think it's only fair, with the accusations that have just been thrown out, that the airport's basically worthless, that somebody be given an opportunity from the airport authority to speak about that. I know you don't have to, but I-
My concern is, I see what you're saying, Mr. Thomas. My concern is, we're gonna get in back and forth, and it's just go back and forth. I think we all know what the authority's gonna say as far as economic impact. I know those numbers, you know those numbers. I just don't, unless the rest of the board sees a need to have the airport authority come forth and make a presentation, and if the consensus is to do that, I'll be glad to go, but I prefer not to, but I will if the board has that consensus.
Well, I do remember at last, the last board meeting, that was one of the reasons that we did defer, and we said that we would feel comfortable if there were people from the authority here, and that was one of the reasons for the deferral. So, I do agree with Mr. Thomas on that.
I don't remember anybody stating that we would want people from the airport authority to be here. There was no discussion of that that I remember, and I don't remember seeing it in the minutes. In terms of the details, I'm not interested in hearing some study that was done that doesn't have real good data behind it. I've seen economic studies, I'm an economist, I've seen data before. I want a hundred and twelve, if that's how many jobs it says it's created. If they could stand up and give me a hundred and twelve names that are employed at the airport today as a result of the airport, now I'm interested, because that's going to bring new information that hadn't been put out before. But like Mr. Sterling said, there's not new information, we've heard all these things before.
Well, I haven't heard it before, because I wasn't on the board when we talked about it.
Do you want to speak?
If you're gonna ask me a direct question, I'd prefer that I can go either way. I think we've talked this out, I know what you're gonna say. You know where I stand, so I got it.
Any further discussion? Ms. Sterling, one more time.
Yes, if there is a sense amongst- Sorry, turn the microphone. If there's a sense amongst the majority of the board that on to limit this to opposing the northern corridor, as Ms. Sellers has said, then I will accept that as a friendly amendment. Is there a sense on the majority before we go to vote, before she makes that as a formal motion, that there is a majority of the board that is willing to do that?
Are you allowed to do that?
I'm gonna defer to the county attorney.
Yeah, I need a ruling on that.
Are we allowed to do that?
Poll the board before you accept a-
Well, I don't think it's customary that you poll the board when you have a motion at a second and you've debated it. Now, if you wanna continue to debate, and from the debate you glean where people are positioned, then I think you accomplish your purpose. Okay, thank you.
Alternatively, she can make the motion, I would accept it, we can vote, and obviously if it doesn't pass, we're gonna be seeing this again and again.
I guess what we could do, based on what you're saying, if Ms. Sellers makes a substitute motion, is that correct, Mr. County Attorney?
A amendment, all I got to do is accept it.
Or a friendly amendment, all you have to do is accept it, and then- Well, if she wants to make a substitute and that's seconded, that would take priority, and you'd have a vote to be taken on that. Okay.
It's a, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It's a friendly amendment, which she would only have to, I would only have to say yes to, since she's a second.
And then we'll vote.
You don't even have to vote on whether or not to make it though.
Okay, so you've accepted the friendly amendment?
I will accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, the friendly amendment is that the resolution would state that we are opposed to the northern flight pattern.
And stay silent on the-
And stay silent on runway extension. Any further discussion? Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion fails five to two. Original motion. Mr. Sterling's motion, motion R-15-41. The original motion. Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion fails five to two. Proposed Resolution 15-64 was a resolution that I asked for. That resolution would prevent or ask the airport, and I think Ms. Sellers raised an excellent point, we are asking, we are not telling, we do not have the authority to tell the airport, that's another separate authority, to ask the airport to hold off on any further expansion until the land use compatibility study is approved by the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. I've put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second it. That was your motion?
That was my motion.
I'll second it.
And I have a second. End of discussion.
I have a question on this one.
Yes, Mr. Thomas.
You know, we've had some rezonings come in where there was some perception, at least, that there's two parties here, and there's some give and take. If we're gonna basically ask one party to cease for now, does that mean we put all land use decisions underneath those patterns as well on hold? And can we even do that?
That's a question for the county attorney. The question, Mr. Schumate, state the question.
So, in a nutshell, what I was saying is, if we ask the airport to cease on any current expansion plans until what we just sent to the Planning Commission gets passed at some point, the opposite side of that has been a lot of these rezonings. So, can we also say for now, until that gets passed, that we're not gonna do any rezonings under all that property as well? Do we even have that authority?
I would not so advise you do that.
Thank you.
I believe to my knowledge, there's only one request right now in the Planning Commission that would be affected, that would be in this area. That's the only one I know of.
Well, I don't know how long it's gonna take them to approve this, I mean-
I don't know, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Bompy.
I have a question regarding if we, if this resolution passes, I would like to know if this interferes, and I don't know what the timetable is for the airport authority in looking at their expansion project. So, let's say this goes down to the Planning Commission, and they sit on it for, you know, for various reasons, for four to six months. Does this impact anything that the airport authority is projecting to do over the next, during that time period? Because that will impact how I vote.
I can't answer that question. I did get an email from one airport authority member and said, based on what I, if I remember correctly, they didn't plan to move on anything for six to nine months. My point in raising this is, we finally have an airport compatibility study in the works, which we should've done years ago, but it wasn't done. It doesn't make sense to me if we are going to, we're getting ready to pass this thing, and yet, expansion continues. Let's put a halt to it temporarily, that's all I'm asking, until airport, until this thing goes through the Planning Commission and back to the board is approved. That way, everybody knows who's on first. Mr. Chair. My only concern. Yes, Mr. Roman, I'll come back to Mr. Cavalier.
Just clarification, sir. The send-down motion gave the Planning Commission-
Well, I do remember at last, the last board meeting, that was one of the reasons that we did defer, and we said that we would feel comfortable if there were people from the authority here, and that was one of the reasons for the deferral. So, I do agree with Mr. Thomas on that.
I don't remember anybody stating that we would want people from the Airport Authority to be here. There was no discussion of that that I remember, and I don't remember seeing it in the minutes. In terms of the details, I'm not interested in hearing some study that was done that doesn't have real good data behind it. I've seen economic studies, I'm an economist, I've seen data before. I want 112, if that's how many jobs it says it's created. If they could stand up and give me 112 names that are employed at the airport today as a result of the airport, now I'm interested, because that's going to bring new information that hadn't been put out before. But like Mr. Stelling said, there's not new information, we've heard all these things before.
Well, I haven't heard it before because I wasn't on the board when we talked about it.
Do you want to speak?
If you're going to ask me a direct question, I'd prefer that I can go either way. I think we've talked this out, I know what you're going to say. You know where I stand, so I got it.
Any further discussion? Ms. Sterling, one more time.
Yes, if a question, I mean, if there is a sense amongst- Sorry, turn the microphone. If there's a sense amongst the majority of the board that on, to limit this to opposing the northern corridor, as Ms. Sellers has said, then I will accept that as a friendly amendment. Is there a sense on the majority before we go to vote, before she makes that as a formal motion, that there is a majority of the board that is willing to do that?
Are you allowed to do that?
I, I mean, it's people can-
I'm going to defer to the county attorney.
Yeah, I need to rule in on that.
Are we allowed to do that?
Poll the board before you accept a-
Well, I don't think it's customary that you poll the board when you have a motion at a second and you've debated it. Now, if you want to continue to debate, and from the debate you glean where people are positioned, then I think you accomplish your purpose.
Okay. Thank you.
Alternatively, she can make the motion, I would accept it, we can vote, and obviously if it doesn't pass, we're going to be seeing this again and again.
I guess, I guess what we could do, based on what you're saying, if Ms. Sellers makes a substitute motion, is that correct, Mr. County Attorney?
A friendly amendment, all I got to do is accept it.
Or a friendly amendment, all you have to do is accept it, and then-
Well, if she wants to make a substitute and that's seconded, that would take priority, and you'd have a vote to be taken on that.
Okay.
It's a, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It's a friendly amendment, which she would only have to, I would only have to say yes to, since she's a second.
And then we'll vote.
You don't even have to vote on whether or not to make it though.
Okay. So, you've accepted the friendly amendment?
I will accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, the friendly amendment is that the resolution would state that we are opposed to the northern flight pattern.
And stay silent on the-
And stay silent on runway extension. Any further discussion? Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion fails five to two. Original motion. Mr. Sterling's motion, motion R. fifteen dash forty-one, forty-one. The original motion. Cast your, cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion fails five to two. Proposed Resolution fifteen dash six-four was a resolution that I asked for. That resolution would prevent or ask the airport, and I think Ms. Sellers raised an excellent point, we are asking, we are not telling, we do not have the authority to tell the airport, that's another separate authority, to ask the airport to hold off on any further expansion until the land use compatibility study is approved by the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. I've put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second it. That was your motion?
That was my motion.
I'll second it.
And I have a second. Any discussion?
I have a question on this one.
Yes, Mr. Thomas.
You know, we've had some rezonings come in where there was some perception at least that there's two parties here, and there's some give and take. If we're going to basically ask one party to cease for now, does that mean we put all land use decisions underneath those patterns as well on hold? And can we even do that?
That, that's a question for the county attorney. The question, Mr. Schumacher, state the question.
So, in a nutshell, what I was saying is, if we ask the airport to cease on any current expansion plans until what we just sent to the Planning Commission gets passed at some point, the opposite side of that has been a lot of these rezonings. So, can we also say for now, until that gets passed, that we're not going to do any rezonings under all that property as well? Do we even have that authority?
I would not so advise you do that.
Thank you.
I believe to my knowledge, there's only one request right now in the Planning Commission that would be affected, that would be in this area. That's the only one I know of.
Well, I don't know how long it's going to take them to approve this, I mean-
I don't know. I don't know.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Bonfie.
I have a question regarding if we, if this resolution passes, I would like to know if this interferes, and I don't know what the timetable is for the Airport Authority in, in looking at their expansion project. So, let's say this goes down to the Planning Commission and they sit on it for, you know, for various reasons for four to six months. Does this impact anything that the Airport Authority is projecting to do over the next, during that time period? Because that will impact how I vote.
I can't answer that question. I, I did get an email from one Airport Authority member and said, based on what I, if I remember correctly, they didn't plan to move on anything for six to nine months. My point in raising this is, we finally have an airport compatibility study in the works, which we should have done years ago, but it wasn't done. It doesn't make sense to me if we are going to, we're getting ready to pass this thing, and yet, expansion continues. Let, let's put a halt to it temporarily, that's all I'm asking, until airport, until this thing goes through the Planning Commission and back to the board is approved. That way, everybody knows who's on first.
Mr. Chair.
My only, my only concern. Yes, Mr. Romanoff, come back, Mr. Cavalier.
Just clarification, sir. The send-down motion gave the Planning Commission sixty days. The board would then have ninety days under the state code to act. So, we're looking at the maximum of five months for adoption of the airport compatibility plan, unless you send it down a second time.
Okay. That satisfy you, Ms. Bonfie?
Yes, that's very helpful. So, we would hang our hat on five months.
Correct.
And we would hang our hat on the conversation that you had with the one Airport Authority individual, that they did not plan to take any action for nine months.
Six to nine months.
Six to nine months.
Correct. Mr. Cavalier.
I think that that, that fact contradicts what I've heard, Mr. Chairman, in that they do have, they have had some conversations with a federal customer that may be interested in coming here and, and using, utilizing our airport facilities, so that, you know, I think that this would, you know, anything that we do that would take some sort of action would tie the hands of the Airport Authority right now and perhaps discourage any federal customers from coming in, because we would be sending probably a negative signal out. Now, all that being said, you know, I, I'm not so big on, you know, that, that whole, you know, putting a lot of weight on the land use compatibility study that we, that we've undertaken with the Joint Planning Commission and the Airport Authority. With all respect to the Airport Authority, they should concentrate on airport operations. I don't believe that they are land use experts, that's what our Planning Commission and planning staff is here. But, looking at it the other way, we're not airport operations people. And so, the, you know, the two aren't mixing very well here, and, and it's, it's not something that, that we really, I think, need to get involved with to, to the extent that we have. I, I know that a lot of these things are just suggestions for the most part, but I'm not going to be able to support any, anything that, that ties the hands of the airport, and I hope that they make good choices based upon their expertise, expertise on airport operations, not on land use.
Mr. Thomas.
I would just like to point out that all the work that's been done currently, the draft you see in front of you, the maps we just looked at, already assume the northern pattern is there. So, if we're going to interject now and say, don't do that, are we asking the Planning Commission to go back and change all of their maps to assume, hey, it's only the southern because the Board of Supervisors is in opposition to the northern? I just have a hard time trying to understand what kind of signal that's sending. The work is already done for the most part. Remember, they were asking us, hey, are we on track? Are we close? What do you think? And then we sent it back down to them and said, we think you're on the right track. Now, if they do extend the runway either before or after this thing gets passed, that should be just a simple exercise of moving the zones out a thousand feet. It should be an easy adjustment that we make in the future. So, for me, I think the two are at odds with each other, so I won't be in support of the motion.
Ms. Sterling, you say it's not an easy adjustment to make for the people who will now be captured under this, under the new flight patterns. I understand what you're saying about the south, but there are not subdivisions underneath the south. There are subdivisions that currently exist underneath the northern pattern. That northern pattern is not yet open. Let me tell you, I'll do everything I can to keep the dump open in order to make sure that it never opens, because I care more about the people than I do a few pilots that are going to sit at that airport, most of which don't even live, or it strikes me, based on the emails I've gotten and their location of residency, they don't even live in Stafford. We've got outsiders that are imposing their benefit, to their benefit, on the quality of life and on the safety of Stafford residents through this, and I'm adamantly opposed to it.
Any other discussion? I would remind everyone that the resolution does not ask them not to open the northern pattern, it does not ask them not to extend the runway, it asks them to please hold off until the compatibility study is complete and approved. That's the only thing the resolution says. With that said, I'll ask, cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion fails four to three. Mr. Thomas, you take us into closed session.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to offer a motion, resolution to authorize closed meeting. Whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for discussion concerning the business, where no previous announcement has been made, or the business is interested in locating its facilities in the county pursuant to Virginia Code two dot two dash thirty-seven LA, thirty-seven eleven alpha five, this discussion may occur in a closed meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero, we're in closed session.
Second.
All in favor, cast your votes.
Sure.
Town to the vote. Motion carries seven to zero. We're now adjourned until 7:00 AM. 7:00 PM, I'm sorry. Supervisors, would you please rise for the invocation and pledge?
Creator of all that is and was and will be, in whom we find life, health, and strength, through whose gifts we are clothed and fed, be for us a guide, strength, and wisdom in this our work as representatives of your people. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is presentations by the public. You have three minutes to speak on any subject unless that subject is part of a public hearing this evening. If you want to speak on the public hearing, you have to wait until the public hearing comes up. When you come to the podium, we ask you to give your name, address. You do have three minutes. There are three lights on the pole on the side. The green says go. If it turns to yellow, you have about 60 seconds, and when it turns to red, we would ask that you wrap it up. With that said, I'll turn to the right. Anyone on my right-hand side would like to make a presentation to the board. Saying none, I'll move to the left. Anyone on my left-hand side? Yes, sir. Please come state your name and address.
Kevin Heimavicki, 5 Morrissey Stone Court. I'm the president of the Board of Directors for Austin Ridge Homeowners Association. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and Madam Vice Chairman, and members of the board. Thank you for your commitment to the county, first of all, and you have a tough job. We all know that, and we appreciate everything that, all the support Austin Ridge has gotten from you. Here to speak on behalf of the Austin Ridge Homeowners Association's support for the decision to rezone the 3.3-acre lot on Austin Ridge Drive just south of Booth Court from PD 1 to B 2. This topic is not on the agenda for this evening, but we wanted to address this now in hopes that you might add it to the next board meeting. Mr. Rick Wolf of Rocky Ridge LLC originally submitted to rezone the lot this past summer. The Austin Ridge community appeared before the planning commission to speak against the approval because Mr. Wolf would not proffer out a restaurant. And even though the planning commission recommended approval, our community worked and sure that this change didn't happen, and we appreciate your support for that. In December, Mr. Lemming submitted an appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals on behalf of Rocky Ridge LLC, and the Austin Ridge community was concerned about the outcome of the appeal. And if the appeal went in favor of Mr. Wolf, Austin Ridge community would lose all the items that were placed in the proffers for the rezoning. On January 27th, the Austin Ridge Board of Directors met with Mr. Wolf and Ms. Sellers to discuss a way forward. During the meeting, Mr. Wolf agreed to proffer out the restaurant. In return, I agreed to come and appear before this board and voice the community's support for the rezoning. On January 28th, Mr. Lemming did indeed submit the updated proffers to exclude the restaurant. On 3 February, the Austin Ridge Board of Directors held a public community meeting to discuss the change in the proffers. The Austin Ridge community believes that the ideal situation obviously would be to develop the land for recreational use and turn over to the Austin Ridge community, as Mr. Lemming had outlined in his email to Ms. Sellers. However, with the pending appeal, the homeowners agreed that it was in their best interest to accept the zoning change. And with the zoning change, the community will have several buffers to soften the impact of the surrounding homes. The restaurant was a key issue that prevented from coming here in the first place, and now that it's been proffered out, we are ready for it to come before the board for approval. The Austin Ridge Homeowners Association kindly asks that the board please add this item to the agenda for the next board meeting, and there will not be any opposition from the Austin Ridge community. We will be here to speak in favor of it. Again, thank you for all you do, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, sir, and I apologize. I had a speaker card on you, and it got shuffled over here in my paper.
No worries.
I apologize.
No worries. Thank you.
Next time that happens, you bring it to my attention.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left that would like to address the board?
Waldo, 8 Pickett Lane. It's Paul Waldowski. I was at today's afternoon meeting just sitting in the audience so I could see where Waldo would be. It was interesting to be reminded of the 13-year airport where the Flying Club still resi-exist. Many of you don't realize that it's not the economic engine that everyone thought it was going to be. It looks like one of those aspects that I saw years ago, that it feels good to vote for this, but does it really do good for our county? I don't think so. All you have to do is look at how the votes were done. I think we have a couple of people who are lame ducks, a couple who were on the board who weren't elected to be full representatives, but those are just minor exceptions of what's going on. Also, you should be aware of that there was an interest-free, no-term loan involved. Golly, it's just fascinating to me to watch how these things go on. Then I heard another neat comment from the county administrator that we're growing at a 2% growth. Well, that's just $5 million. So now they're looking to bring in $1.6 million, some kind of grant, for Station 10, which was the $1 million fiasco on Friday, the 13th, in the year 2010. Another one of those great economic engine aspects. When I went out to the Rock Hill Volunteer Fire Department, they said, "Come by any time." I wish some of you would go out there and see exactly how these guys all work for free and gals, and what service and support they're doing. And it's just amazing to me. The only time that people seem to visit them is during election season. You know, there's a term that floats around this county now called a TGA. It really should be called a transportation growth area because that's how growth areas are really made, is you've got to have transportation, you've got to have water and sewer, and to name it a targeted growth area, sounds to me like we're doing some kind of targeting. Either it could be an Air Force sortie, could be some target practice on some firing range. I think transportation growth area is much more meaningful to the citizens. I'll close with UDAs. You know, they're still on the books. They're urban downtown areas. They're undeveloped. You don't have transportation. The House Bill 869 was passed, making it mandatory on 223, and everyone just thought it was a good thing to do. It feels good, but really doesn't do good.
Thank you. Is anyone else on my left that would like to address the board? Saying none, I'll bring it back. Our first public hearing of the evening, item number 21, planning and zoning, consider reclassification of 36 acres from B 2 to R 1 for the reserve at Woodstock Lane, Griffiths Widewater District. Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jeff Harvey, the Director of Planning and Zoning. Today, we have a reclassification, as the chairman mentioned, in the Griffiths Widewater District. It's application RC 1400159. May I have the computer, please? The request is to rezone property from B 2 urban commercial to R 1 suburban residential to accommodate a small subdivision of approximately 40 dwelling units. The applicant is Carl Bernstein. He's represented tonight by Charlie Payne of Herschler Fleischer. There are two properties involved, the Sessors Parcel 21167 and 21170. There are portions of both parcels comprising a total of 35 acres. This is the location map for the area that's affected. The area that's being proposed for the rezoning is highlighted in red. The greenish color is the parent parcels. So as you can see, it involves portions of those properties. The surrounding development in this area, as you can indicate from the map, is you have Carl Lewis Field immediately to the north, which is a community rec center for the county, and there's also some playing fields. To the east is the Acquire Harbor neighborhood, as well as to the south. To the west is Brent Cemetery, which is a historic cemetery located within the county. It's owned and operated by the Archdiocese, and then also undeveloped property along Telegraph Road. This is the zoning map of the current area. The parcels involved in this rezoning application are highlighted in red. As you can see from the map, the surrounding properties immediately adjacent to this property are predominantly R 1 zoned. So this requested rezoning would be consistent with those existing zone properties out there. There is some commercial zone property between Telegraph Road and Jefferson Davis Highway. Those properties generally have higher visibility and better transportation access in this current property. The land use plan component of our comprehensive plan recommends the property for suburban uses. Suburban uses are generally intended to be for single-family detached development at three units per acre or lower density, and/or community-related uses such as community-serving retail, institutional uses such as schools, churches, and those types of things that support nearby neighborhoods. This is the general development plan for the project. It shows a primary access point off of Woodstock Lane in this location. This portion of Woodstock Lane is an unimproved road section, so it exists currently as a gravel road. There's the community center along the road in this general location, and there's a few homes in this proximity along Woodstock Lane. As you can see from the general development plan, there's As you can see from the general development plan, there's a significant amount of open space within the property. It encompasses this area along here and over back through here. So this is approximately 23 acres of the 35-acre site, which is going to be open space, and it's currently in a wooded condition, so there's going to be a significant amount of woods preserved with this overall development. The open space that's required for the property is approximately 10 and 1/2 acres. However, with this cluster development, they're proposing 23 acres to be preserved. In addition to the preservation of open space with the cluster development, there are some other commitments to try to minimize the impact of this development to the surrounding community, as well as the future residents of this neighborhood. In specific, there is going to be a street buffer along Telegraph Road, which is highlighted in this vicinity here. Telegraph Road by our transportation plan is identified as a collector's street, so county code requires that they provide a buffer. In addition to the buffer, they're going to also provide evergreen trees and a buffer of that strip, so it helps soften the impact of those houses that might back up to Telegraph Road. Additionally, as measures provided by the applicant to help make this community more internally focused and minimize the impacts to neighbors, they're providing fencing along portions of Woodstock Lane along the backs of the lots. In addition to the fencing, they would provide an additional row of evergreen trees along these last three lots, which are in closer proximity to the existing homes along Woodstock This is the entrance point that would serve the community. There'd be one entrance point. They've already had discussions with VDOT about the VDOT connectivity requirements. VDOT standards require that typically with a neighborhood, you're going to have more than one access point in and out of the neighborhood. However, due to the significant amount of wetlands and preservation area and intersection spacing with Telegraph Road and Woodstock Lane, it was determined that this is the best location for an entrance, and there would only be one entrance. Some of the things that really jumped out at staff when we were reviewing the application was the traffic situation. The applicant submitted an impact study with their application, which is normally required. And looking at the impact study, it gave us information that didn't surprise us, but sort of stands out there. Specifically, the intersection of Woodstock Lane and Route 1 has operational problems. It currently operates at Level Service F, which is failing without development in this property. Also, there are some concerns about the intersection of Route 1 and Telegraph Road. In both cases, the school division in the past has made it aware to the county that they have some operational problems with getting school buses in and out of both those intersections. I will note that the county has been studying alternatives to improve this intersection, which potentially could include turn lanes. The specific problem that creates impact is that there's a lot of stacking on this section of Woodstock Lane, waiting for vehicles to turn out and go south on Route 1. Because of the traffic volumes, oftentimes, that's difficult. So ultimately, there'll need to be some turn lane improvements and possibly signalization. As I mentioned, the county's currently working with VDOT to scope and study that project. It's going to be a few years out, but it's currently underway. There are a number of proffers that are proposed with this project, and they specifically committed development of the property in accordance with the GDP. Due to the size of this property and small scale, as well as the wetlands and art critical resource protection area, for the most part, the general development plan is shown as the best possible scenario for developing the property. They also have architectural renderings and images that were provided in the Board Supervisor Staff Report. Those five different images are used as examples of how the house types will comply with our neighborhood design standards in our comprehensive plan. They've provided cash contributions for parks and recreation and fire and rescue, which total $32,000 per dwelling unit for each dwelling unit that's built within the project. That roughly breaks down to $18,250 designated for Fire Station 9, which was discussed earlier today. Mr. Cavalier mentioned that the county's working with the Station 9 volunteers, as well as the Acquire Harbor, to possibly take on county ownership of that facility. If that were to occur, then these proffers could be utilized towards that facility. Those total proffers would equate to $730,000. Also, there'd be $13,750 per dwelling unit that could be attributed to improvements at Carl Lewis Community Center. And being a staff member here, I've utilized Carl Lewis' facility a few times. It's a great facility, but could use some updating, and that would give us some opportunity to make those kind of improvements at that facility. In addition to that, they provide some commitment to have a Phase 1 cultural resources study done, and if warranted, a Phase 2 study, and that's largely in part due to its proximity to the historic Brent Cemetery. There is a significant buffer between this proposed site development and the cemetery, but in case there was any other human activities that interacted with that cemetery area, that could be picked up as part of the archaeological study. Something that was not really a part of the land use discussion directly with the applicant from the county staff perspective, but came up during the discussion with the planning commission, is that the caretakers for the Brent Cemetery had asked the applicant to consider making some improvements to the cemetery, specifically some culvert improvements and other fencing improvements on the site. The applicant's committed to be a good neighbor and is contributing $10,000 towards that effort. With the development plan, they've also proffered to identify significant tree stands area, tree stand areas that can be saved, if possible, with their development plan. And also, they have the buffer their development from the preservation areas to try to keep them secure and not impacted as construction occurs. Additional proffers utilize evergreen trees within the buffer yards, again, trying to keep this project so it doesn't have the significant impact to the existing homes and nearby neighbors. They would require at least one tree planted in the root of each yard. Again, that's trying to incorporate a staff comment in that our comprehensive plan recommends we try to minimize impacts to existing tree cover or enhance tree cover where we can. So we feel that in the backyards adjacent to the preservation area, it'll help enhance what's been disturbed and help with meeting our goal of the comprehensive plan. There's an existing well that's on a portion of the property, and within 180 days, that well will be capped and dealt with in accordance with Health Department requirements, and also they would preserve existing vegetation within Open Space Parcel A. In the last few board meetings, the board had expressed a desire to see how individual rezonings would stack up against our current proffer guidelines, as well as proffer guidelines that have been discussed at the Finance Audit and Budget Committee level, and also comparing them with some other development projects the board has considered most recently. At the top row on this chart, you see the reserve of Woodstock Lane. In total, they're proposing $32,000 per dwelling unit for monetary contributions. The current guidelines are $47,730 for a single-family detached home. But when you look at the draft guidelines that have been developed with the debt service credit, which would be automatic, it would have a number of close to $34,000 per lot. And considering that in relation to three recent development projects that the board has considered and approved, those were all lower than what's being proposed with the current application. So the application as proposed is in line with what the board has approved most recently, and is very close to the draft guidelines, which the board is still currently considering. Regarding the findings, the staff believes that the application is consistent with the recommendations of our comprehensive plan, the established zoning pattern and pattern of development in the vicinity. We also believe that the proposed development pattern accommodates planned transportation improvements, as in that they are going to have transportation impact fees that they're going to pay with the overall development. They also will be dedicating right away along Telegraph Road and improving a portion of the main access road as a public estate road. Monetary proffers exceed parks and rec and fire and rescue guidelines. However, on the other hand, as potential negatives, we know that there's an existing transportation problem at those intersections of Telegraph Road and Woodstock Lane, as well as Route 1 and Woodstock Lane, excuse me, Route 1 and Woodstock and Route 1 and Telegraph. Those are existing conditions and problems. Our comprehensive plan has sort of a whole harmless recommendation that if you're having an impact to intersections, you provide mechanisms to offset those impacts. In this particular case, the traffic study showed that there was a slight increase in wait time at those intersections. It's something that's somewhat beyond the scope of this project because of its location and size to really adequately address. However, the proffers, as written, do give the board flexibility if you want to apply the proffer money instead of to Station 9. You can apply them both to schools, as well as to transportation, if we want to use that to help facilitate the road improvement project. Also, too, based on the current proffer guidelines, the proposed proffers do not address libraries, schools, or general government to help offset those impacts of services. With the final recommendation, we would recommend, as far as staff, approval of the application, noting that the guidelines that are currently in effect recommend monetary proffers for schools, libraries, and general government transportation to be considered. The planning commission is deliberation-recommended approval unanimously of this application.
Ms. Sellers?
If you go back to the one on transportation, and I'll probably go back to it, but the way it's currently zoned, what would that do to the intersection? Would it?
Oh, yes, thank you.
How's it compare?
The current zoning with B 2 Urban Commercial would have a significant impact if it was developed on a buy-right basis. There are several hundred thousand square feet of potential development, which would have a much higher traffic impact than this proposed residential zoning. I'm sorry.
So this is better than putting a commercial, that commercial property there?
As far as traffic impacts, yes, this is better than the current buy-right development potential.
And I believe the schools, I've talked to a couple of the school board members, and their concern is the buses going in and out of there, or was that not?
For this general area, yes, that is their concern, is the buses accessing the intersection of Woodstock Lane and Route 1.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Harvey? Back to Mr. Harvey. Would the applicant like to address the board?
Mr. Chairman and other members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Charlie Payne, Law from Herschler-Fleischer, and represent the applicant. I want to thank you for your time this evening. It's always a pleasure to be in Stafford County. I want to thank staff and Mr. Harvey, as always, for its diligent work in regards to these applications. They put a lot of time and effort into it, and we appreciate that. I will be brief. I think Mr. Harvey has covered much of the project, and I'll be as brief as possible. Again, this is in the Griffiths-Widewater District. That includes two parcels for a total of 34-plus acres. This is a rezoning request to R 1 from B 2 for a infield, small infield development, residential development of 40 units. The project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, as Mr. Harvey has stated. This is also a project, even at the residential proposal, that is 1.15 units to the acre, which is much less than what is allowed under R 1, which is 1.5, which would yield about 52 units, and under the comp plan, it's three units to the acre, which would yield 102 units, if you were to completely be able to build it out. This does, from operating perspective, cost to the county yield a net positive, about $28,000 per year. There are proposed improvements to Woodstock Road and to Telegraph. And to the point about the school buses, and some of the folks in the neighborhood have been concerned about Telegraph intersection with Woodstock, this project will improve that area, in fact, bring Woodstock up to spec, to VDOT specs in regards to improvements, which is a very positive thing for the immediate neighborhood, and also will improve safety at that intersection. The total cash proffers, as been stated, is about 1.28 million. It is 1.28 million. It's $32,000 a unit. This property is also subject to transportation impact fees, so it'll be impact fees on top of that amount. The proffers are focused, if you will, on fire and rescue, about $730,000 for the Acquire Harbor, Firehouse 9, and Parks and Recreation, $550,000. There's also a significant environmental plus here for this project. We are preserving 66% of the property, which is two-plus times what is required under the ordinance, including about 17 acres of trees, which I know was very positively received by staff. We have also, in being a good neighbor and listening to the constituents at the planning commission hearing, we heard from the Brent Cemetery folks, they're here tonight, from the Arlington Diocese and the Knights of Columbus. We worked with them after the planning commission meeting to come up with what they believed, and we believe, was a reasonable proposal to assist them in improving that historic site. Many of you may very well know that that's a very historic site, and in addition to the assistance that we're providing of $10,000, we're also providing in-kind assistance to fix the road culvert access and some surveying requirements that they needed as part of the improvements. In addition, I think it's important to note that state code requires us to be 200 feet. If you're taking a look at the GDP, you'll see that we're well beyond that from a buffering perspective from this site, so I think that's a very positive thing, as well, that was received by the cemetery folks. Buy-right, I think Ms. Sellers raised the issue, you would have about 16, from 12,000 to 16,000 trips per day from that site. You could develop about 200-plus thousand square feet of commercial space. Our project, 40 units, is generating about 450 trips per day, so four times the amount just about of trips less than what could be done by right, which will provide some relief if the project was to be built by right. In regards to some of the transportation questions about the intersection of Telegraph and 1, I think Mr. Harvey said it well, problems there with or without the project. We are contributing very little to that intersection in regards to impact. Again, this project is paying impact fees, we believe is its fair share in regards to that contribution. In addition to that, again, we're making right-away dedications and improving Telegraph and Woodstock in the immediate area. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions any of you may have, and thank you again for your time.
Any questions for Mr. Payne? Saying none, thank you, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll now open up the public hearing. I remind everyone you have three minutes to speak on this subject. If there's anyone on my right that would care to speak for or against this project? Yes, sir. Please come up.
My name is William Eman. I live at 75 Woodstock Lane, which is directly across from this development. I am for it. I think it's a big improvement to the area. Woodstock Lane, that dirt portion has been, we've had a lot of issues with that road as far as wear and tear and erosion. I don't think it's going to be any more impact on traffic if that development goes in. I'd rather see a housing development rather than an industrial park. So I am for that development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on my right like to speak in favor or against this project? Saying none, I'll move to the left. Anyone on my left would like to speak in favor or
Paul Dusky, 8 Picket Lane. I'm not in favor of any development on that side of the Route 1. You have an F rating, and you failed to get, I love the new word, "signalization." We need a traffic light there. And as far as B 2 goes, you're all worried about 2,000 square feet. It's called "location, location, location." There's no good businessman that's going to open up any kind of business in that aspect. So I don't even know where you're coming from on that regard. This fits nicely in my opening remarks. This is not a TGA, a transportation growth area. This is a targeted growth area. You're picking 40 new dwellings, so guess what? Are you going to bring another HOA in? Hello. According to Wikipedia, the rural county is 280 square miles, composed of 270 square miles of land and 10... miles of land and 10 square miles of water, not counting that Rocky Pork Reservoir. So now, here we are, we already have 97 square miles of land, according to the census of 2010, and 173 square miles is forest. Well, a forest is oak trees. You know, oak is good dead or alive, not like evergreen trees. They keep getting knocked over. You keep letting these builders cheap out and bring in evergreen trees and maples and nor'easters and hurricanes just eat them up for lunch. 450 trips per day is outrageous for that part of the county. Route One is a big hazard. As you saw, like most of these developments, $0 for schools and transportation. Those are the major areas for transportation growth areas. Station number nine, we keep on talking about fire stations, and we already, if you go talk to the firefighters, they'll even tell you, we have probably four too many stations already in this county. I think we have 14 now, and we should only have 10. I do like the good neighbor aspect of the cemetery, but I much prefer giving it to an Eagle Scout applicant who could do a much better job than any developer could in maintaining the cemetery like they've done in many other aspects throughout the county. It's just amazing to me, you can approve it, and we'll see, like Kevin Costner says, build it and they will come, but it's one of those key aspects. Boy, doesn't this feel good to improve this? But really, does it do good for the county? $28,000 a year is really nothing.
Anyone else like to speak for or against the project? Yes, please come down.
I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. My name is Jen Coolidge, and I live at 19 Tamer Lane Drive in Stafford, Virginia. The Stonebridge subdivision. I have to deal with Telegraph Road every day, and I can't tell you what they've done at the Boswell intersection since they've re-drained or whatever, but it is taking out the calipers of my car. I agree with everything that Walder just said, okay? I have lived in Stafford since November 2008. I'm horrified by what I'm seeing with respect to the development that's going on in this county. There's really no thought with respect to the impact on traffic, the wear and tear on people's cars, the aggravation that people face on a daily basis. I will go so far as to tell you, Route One is a death trap, okay? I'm going to digress for a hot second with respect to Woodstock and Telegraph, but my son was almost killed on Route One across the street from the Nissan because some schmuck ran up the shoulder of the road and rear-ended him at 40 miles an hour. Don't get me started on what Stafford police did or didn't do with respect to that incident. But having said that, the amount of traffic that we're facing on Telegraph Road right now, without a, a signal at the crucifix, it's a death trap. And I can't even imagine anyone seriously considering a seven-to-nothing vote in approving this. You don't live there. You live there. You know. It's outrageous. We're better than this. We don't need to be developing anymore without, oh, let's just stick it in there. What about the other acres that you're all sitting there saying, oh, we're going to preserve this? Until when? Enough is enough. Y'all need to stop throwing land to developers with little thought for infrastructure on school, the impact on water, the impact on traffic, the impact on the quality of life of the people that live in that subdivision or in that area. It's outrageous. And I, you know, I've, I've lived in Virginia for 26 years. I've, I've lived in Stafford for six. I am, I'm used to Reston, Herndon, Oakton, and the aesthetic and the quality of life that goes on up there. People of Stafford deserve better, and I would fully expect that this board step up and do the right thing on this subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak for or against the project? Seeing none, the applicant, would you like to rebuttal?
Mr. Chairman, just, just very briefly, I, I think that we have made a point, and will reiterate that this is a downzoning, this is a small infield project. This project will have less of an impact on traffic in, in regards to the preservation areas. It's been offered as preserved, so it will be preserved unless this board deems otherwise. Anyways, Mr. Chairman, that's my other, that's for me and comments that I have.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board. This is the Griffiths-Widewater District, Mr. Cavalier.
Well, I think we've, we've heard all sides of the argument here pretty much, and what I think in this case is that, I, I'm not sure that this was the best area for a, a B2 zoning to begin with, because it's, it's off Route One. I don't think this is conducive to a, a business location. And as we, we know, if, if a shopping center went in there, the amount of traffic generated by right from a, from a shopping center that could go there, paying no proffers, would generate tons more traffic than a 40 lot subdivision that's in cluster. So there's plenty of open space. I also, you know, in working with Mr. Payne, have developed some, some proffers that go toward two very worthwhile projects. One being the Carl Lewis Building, which was brought up by one of the speakers, is, you know, they wanted to see scout projects. Well, Eagle Scouts are what the Carl Lewis Building produces, and I don't know if it's been 50 or 75 or whatever, the amount there, been to many ceremonies there. And, and that's just a shell of a building that's, that's basically falling down. So the money used for the renovation of that building will go toward a very worthwhile endeavor. The, the, the rest of the money, the $730,000, if approved by Acquah Harbor Property Owners Association and the Rescue Squad, if that Station 10 or 9 is deeded to the county, the money here will add on, renovate that building, add another bay for a fire truck that, that was not built for. It has a fire truck in it now, but there's not enough room because it was only built as a rescue squad. And then it will also have rooms for a training room and some bunk space, so that the volunteers who stay there will have a place to, to stay, as well as career people there. So again, two very worthwhile projects that could come as a result of this, which, and I'm, I've never been one to, to support a rezoning from a business to a residential, but in this case, it makes all the sense in the world. And the residents who live around there for, for Mr. Eamon and, and others have, have said they support this project. So with that in mind, I'll, I'd like to make a motion for R O 15-14.
Motion is made. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second motion. Before we go further, I was reminded by the clerk that I, I did not officially close the public hearing. Public hearing is officially closed. Thank you. Any discussion? I have a motion and a second. Ms. Bonkey.
Yes, there are some things about this project. I like the open space in this project, and I like the fact that we're going to be built, buying the Acquah Station and adding some equipment to it. I understand your concern regarding the Carl Lewis Building being dilapidated. I guess the concern that I have is, I'm curious what the timing of the project is in light of the transportation issues at that light. Like, what's the, what?
Mr. Harvey, or is it Mr. Payne who wants to answer that question? Why don't y'all just come on up together?
Well, Mr. Harvey's looking at me, so I guess it's been passed. Charlie Payne, Law Firm Herschel Fleischer, represent the applicant. Ms. Bonkey, it's, it's likely three-to-five-year project. It's probably the build-out period.
Okay, so we may be in a position where VDOT may be doing something at that point in time.
Correct.
So it's not imminent?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Milton.
I want to know, I want to, I think I know the answer, but who, what, that fire station, what area does it serve?
Station Nine. The, I don't know the geographic boundaries exactly, Mr. Milton, but their, their first due area would be Acquah Harbor, then north to where Potomac Hills is, and then west down Garrisonville Road, south basically to where Station Two is. So right in that, basically, central eastern portion of the county.
One of our, one of our densest areas.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your vote. Tally the vote, motion carries six to one. Next item on the agenda. Before we move to the agenda, I was brought to my attention, a gentleman in the back raised his hand during public comment time, and I overlooked him. If that gentleman would come forward, you're welcome to come up and present three minutes
Thank, thank you, sir. I'm David Starr from 106 Hope, Hope Road, and today I'm talking about Courthouse Manor project, in which y'all will be voting on next week, on the 3rd, the 3rd of March. And I have a lot of deep concerns about, about this project and the impact it has on, on my family living directly adjacent to it. What this project has is absolutely 180 degrees away from what the previous project does. This project does not have any open spaces, any contiguous open, open spaces. It's 33 acres, as opposed to this project, which was 30, 36 acres. They're proposing, again, no, no contiguous substantial open space, where, where the previous one had 23 acres of space. There's also the impact of when, while, I'm sorry, while everybody has the right to develop the land that, that, that they own, okay? It's to the, they don't have an inherent right to have, to have the board change, change the zoning of it. Now, the Courthouse Common, Courthouse Manor project, in which, in which y'all, y'all were here last week, in which you've already previously heard in the past, is divided into two different zoning areas. I believe a mixed-use, and then there's also a R1 area, which is right behind my, my house. And the proffers in which, which the county is requesting is to, right-of-way to build a Route One bypass road, which goes right through the heart of this R1 currently zoned, zoned area. When I went ahead and purchased my land in 2004, for, for the house and everything, I had every expectation to know that some houses or whatever might be next to me. I was, it was zoned R, R1. And right now, I'm facing, in, in, in the out, out years, that I'm going to have up to a four-lane road 40 feet from my, from my back door. My house was built kind of close to the property line, and, and they are going to, going to push the right-of-way to 20 feet or less off the property line, according to the staff report. But I, before my time is over, I just wanted to bring up one, one minor correction of the staff report dated this, this, this December 10th. They incorrectly stated the speed limit on Hope Road as 35 miles an hour, and in the first half mile of, of Hope, Hope Road, it's a 30 mile an hour speed, limit. But thank you, and look, look forward to engaging y'all, or speaking to you again next week. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And once again, I apologize for overlooking your quoted presentation time. We have three public hearings left. I see that most of the people in the room appear to be here for item number 24, which is consider a farming lease on 68 acres at Duff, McDuff Green Park. I pulled the board, and we've agreed to move that forward, so that will be the next public hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a statement.
Yes, please.
Sounds perfect. After a consultation with the county attorney, I'm voluntarily abstaining from any discussion or vote on a farm field lease on Duff McDuff Green Memorial Park this evening and in the future, because I have a direct relationship with the bidders and/or their direct business associates.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. County Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, we are, we found Ms. Porter. There she is.
There you go.
I am Jamie Porter, your Director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities. Excuse me, I didn't realize I was going to be pulled earlier in the agenda. I'm here this evening.
Always have to be ready for this group.
I see that now, sir. I apologize.
Only apologize.
We're here this evening because we did a request for information for Duff McDuff Green Farm. In 2010, Mr. Green gave Stafford County approximately 125 acres of his property. In 2011, we did a lease with Charles Henderson Farms. The lease was set to renew in 2014, and we determined that we would do a request for information and find out whether or not there were other interests in the farm and an ability to be able to practice farming and any other interest in being able to practice it differently, whether or not we were getting the best interest that we could for the property. So we did a request for information in November, and in December of 2014, we received two respondents. One was Charles Henderson Farms, caribou Ralph Sutton. He'd been farming the land part-time for about three years. And then the second one was from Blaisdell Farms of Stafford County, and the owner and operator is Gerald Young. Based on the information that was provided, the proposals that came from both of the farmers, it is my recommendation that we go with Blaisdell Farms. He provided a lot of information regarding the type of farming that he would do, the way that he would do the testing, and the results that we would have before we decided to go through with the completion of the Duff McDuff Green Park. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Mr. Sterling.
So right now, it is farmed and sort of on lease, and so we're talking about the renewal. How much do we get annual revenues from this lease?
$50 per acre was the start. It had a 3% increase annually, so we're right at about $3,500 annually.
So we get $3,500, and? I hate to ask this, how much did we spend to go out with an RFI, staff time, paperwork, mailings, postings, and everything else to advertise on what is a $3,500 a year operation?
Most of the work I'd done myself, I'd been in procurement since about 2008.
But we paid you. That's staff time.
That is correct. It is staff time. And then we did the advertisement for 30 days. I'm not 100% certain what our advertisement cost was for that period of time.
Other questions for Ms. Porter?
I have one.
Yes, Ms. Bon.
Okay, as I'm trying to differentiate between these two proposals, one of them lists something called an annual nutrient management plan, approved by the Tri-County Soil and Water Conservation Commission. Now, the other one may do that as well, but for whatever reason, didn't list that. Can you help me understand what that is, and does, is that something that's unique to that particular proposal?
It is unique to the proposal. There is a way for a farmer to have a nutrient management plan and to have someone from the USDA to take a look at the results of his pH testing for the farms that he manages. It's my understanding that it's supposed to stay around 6%, and the information that I got back from Blaisdell Farms from several of the properties that he manages shows that he was staying at the pH level that's recommended. It also goes to soil and water conservation.
Okay, so that, what does that mean for Stafford County?
It's showing that the practices that he used are the practices that the United States Department of Agriculture prefers.
Okay, and do we know if the other company was doing that over the last many years?
I do not know.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Sterling. Mr. Sterling.
The approximate area we just approved, that community drain field, isn't it?
That's correct. I believe you're correct.
Worried about soil and water and soils management? That's, okay.
I'm not sure how-
I guess I'm more of an editorial comment than a question.
Without having Mr. Thomas here-
It's a similar area, yeah.
I don't know how close it is. Any other questions for Ms. Porter? Thank you, Ms. Porter. With that, I'll open the public hearing. I would remind those who come to speak, please state your name and address. You have three minutes. The little green light will come on, which means you're good to go. The yellow light means, better wrap it up, you've got about a minute left, and the red light is wrap it up. I do have one speaker card, and I'll call him first, Mr. Lyndy Henderson.
Good evening. My name is Lyndy Henderson. I'm here to represent Charles L. Henderson Farms LLC. My dad, Mr. Charles Henderson Senior, and Mr. Sutton have been farming together for 40 years. For the past 20 years, they have been farming the majority of the farms east of Fredericksburg along Route Three, which included Duff Green. With Stafford County continuing to grow, farmland is becoming hard to find. We lease around 1,000 acres between Stafford County and King George, so we work hard trying to make sure we do the right thing for all our landowners. We are consistently adjusting our farm practices to meet today's needs. Some examples include crop rotation, cover crops, using new equipment to minimize land disturbances, hiring nutrient management firm to test land and tell us exactly what nutrients are needed. For the past three years while farming the land in Stafford County, the Assistant Director for the Parks and Rec has told me that we fulfilled all county requirements. Also, we have gone above and beyond those requirements to offer a lending hand to the county, some examples including bush hogging the areas not being farmed at Duff Green, cleanup of old biv wire, removal of broken limbs from the seed of trees along the entrance. We were told this past year the county was going to have to put the farm out to public. RFI was sent out. We applied accordingly. In bold print, it stated responders do not need to prepare detailed proposals at this stage. About 10 days before the meeting, it was supposed to have been last week, we got a call from friend asking if we seen a public notice about the land being rented to Blaisdell Farms. Made a couple of calls. We met with Ms. Porter to find out how decision was made, and that's when she was telling me about the, that his was more detailed. Well, how do you choose one proposal from another by looking at details when the RFI says in bold print that the proposal need not be detailed at this stage? In addition, I want the board to realize that my dad and I have both been staffed up Stafford County residence for 50-plus years, and also Mr. Sutton owns property in Stafford County. In closure, I would like the Board of Supervisors strongly consider the opportunity, oh, I'm sorry. In closure, I would like the Board of Supervisors to strongly consider giving us the opportunity to finish what we started 20 years ago for Mr. Duff Green. During the whole process, we never once was asked about the price. At this time, I would like to offer the county $60 per acre with a 3% increase per year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
Oh, can I, one more thing? When you asked about the, can I say one more thing?
Quickly, yes.
On the pH thing, that was one of the requirements that we had to do. We had to provide the county with a pH showing that we kept it within 6.0 to 6.5.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on my right that would like to speak on this issue? Anyone else on my right?
John Gray. I live at 4 Bell Plains Drive, and most of y'all already know I was agriculture agent for Stafford County, and I've been retired in there for 19 years. I'm concerned that we have a donor in Duff Green. His intention was for that land to be given to the parks for the benefit of the people in Stafford County. I know that Duff Green's concern for the land is that Mr. Henderson continued to farm that piece of land. Now, let's go back to the young lady over to my left. Nutrient Plans is administered by the Soil and Water Conservation District, not by the USDA. It's a voluntary program in the state of Virginia. Mr. Henderson and them has a plan that they have followed very well, okay? Blaisdell Farm has a plan that's followed very well. Merlin has a mandatory plan, but both of these farmers do it voluntarily. And I'll, must be getting short here. I think the Stafford County should continue with the likes of the donor of that land, which was Duff Green, to continue with the person. I'm concerned that people give property and their time to Stafford County. You should always do what the intent of the donor would like for you to do. And as of tonight, if Duff Green was standing here, he would say, "Continue as it is." Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Anyone else on my right that would like to speak on the issue? Saying no, anyone on my left?
Hello, my name is Mike Berry. I live at 1124 Hartwood Road. I'm here to speak on behalf of Blaisdell Farms. Jerry Young is a good friend of mine. He operates as Blaisdell Farms. He's grown up in farming. He's at least a third-generation farmer, raised in farms, works here in Stafford County. His father and his grandfather ran a dairy farm on Ferry Road. It's now being used as a grain farm. They no longer have dairy cattle because, as you know, if you look around, there are very few dairy farms left in the state of Virginia, much less around here. He's a true farmer. He makes his living by farming and farm-related activities. This is not a hobby. It's not a tax write-off. It's how he takes care of his family, feeds them. It's a family tradition for them. He lives and raises his children and his grandchildren in the district where this land is located. It's right down the street from his house. Farmland in Stafford County, as Lyndy had told you before, is shrinking by the day. If you look around, we've heard already one or two different people come in proposing to build subdivisions around the county. I, myself, live in the Hartwood District. They're closing my business out. I'm surrounded by subdivisions now. This affects Jerry's ability to be able to make a living as a true farmer. Blaisdell Farms owns a tremendous portion of land in the district that we're talking about. They pay their taxes there. They've done so for many decades. Three different generations of family members have done so. I noticed you have a publication in the foyer when I came in tonight. There's an article in here about White Oak Farm and how proud the county is that it's a five-generation farm. So if it's important in here, maybe it should be important in this, what you're thinking about tonight. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Anyone else on my left wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
My name is Jessica Hildebrand, and I'm here to support and speak on behalf of my father, Gerald Young. Let me start by saying he is the hardest-working person that I know, and aside from his grandsons, farming is one of his biggest passions. He will work from sunup to sundown and never complain about all of the hours that he logs daily. He is very proud of his work, and seeing the end results of his hard work always puts a smile on his face. My father has taught my sister and I the true value of hard work. We both grew up helping work on our family dairy farm, as well as raising 4-H years for 10 years. We are both fortunate enough to now have children of our own and hope that we will be able to pass along these values to them. And I've always heard my dad say, "As long as the good Lord gives me two working hands, I will keep on working." You don't find many people with the same work ethic today. I've taught middle school for seven years in both Stafford County and Henrico County, and have been fortunate enough to share with my students my experiences of growing up on a family farm. It has been my goal to try and pass along to them the many valuable lessons that I've learned over the years through hard work and perseverance. My students love hearing stories about my childhood and learning that their food doesn't just come from the grocery store. It makes me proud that I can connect with them through my childhood experiences. All of that is just to let you know that I've been born and raised, and I've been fortunate enough that I've been able to know what it is to have hard work. My father makes a living through farming, especially crop farming, but unfortunately, there's not enough land left to farm these days. My dad has lost many acres over the years to developers, and in order to maintain his business, his livelihood, and his passion, he needs more land to farm. He takes great pride in all the land that he cares for, spending countless hours toiling over his crops and maintaining the fields. By allowing him to farm the property at McDuff Green, you're allowing him to continue to be successful as a farmer, as well as continue to provide for his family. My father will go above and beyond all of your expectations of sustaining the property. This may not seem like a big deal to some of you, but the fact that my dad makes a living off of farming the land, it is a big deal when there's no land left to farm. And I think it's very important that we try to give the farmers the land they need to keep on farming, and he really needs this land in order to maintain and keep up his business. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Gerald Young, Blaisdell Farms, 30 Blaisdell Road. I live in the George Washington District. I've been there all my life. I would like to thank each of you for taking this time to hear my request to farm the Duff Green property. Let me begin by sharing you some of my history. My name is Gerald Young, a lifelong resident and farmer of Stafford County. Farming is the only job I've ever had. My family has farmed since 1942. I was born in 1957. We have been there our whole lives. We have taken care of many acres in the past in Stafford. We maintain a dairy farm until my father's passing, and he told me to take care of my farm, so I did what he said. I've continued farming with grain, raising beef cattle, and it's my only occupation. As a lifelong resident, a third-generation farmer, I earned my American Farmer's Degree in 1976 through the FFA. You had to have 3,000 hours of work time to get that, and you only get that from the President of the United States. It's only two of us have ever been to Stafford County. Hunter Greenlaw got it in 1930-some, and I got it in 1976. Of all the people that's ever been through FFA, we've only had two in this county. I'm currently a member of the Stafford Root Club. I was a member of the FFA. I was a member of the Young Farmers Association. I raised my two daughters through full H, Stafford Full H, for 10 years raising stairs. Each of those stairs that they raised helped pay for their college education. This was a family project to help my girls' life skills, a way to earn money to help them pay for college education. My wife and I, along with a part-time worker, maintain several farms in Stafford and King George. We work around an average 800 acres. It's my long passion and my livelihood. We enjoy working and taking care of the land. Watching the sweat, the hard labor grow into beautiful crops is something that only a farmer can appreciate. Again, I want to thank y'all, and I want to add to at the end of it, the nutrient management program is something that we do do voluntarily, but it costs us 700, anywhere from $700 to $1,000 a year to pay for it. But that keeps a record of all your crops. All my pHs and all my soil tests are over 6%, most of them 7%. We've taken, if you don't take care of the land, then the land's not going to take care of you. If you make your living off the land, then you got to provide and do the best that you can. I farm full-time, every day. I don't have a sideline job working somewhere else outside of the county. We've got 350 acres that I've paid taxes on all my life in Stafford County, and I live a mile from the property. And I farm land right close to the property, on either side of the property, and all up and down Route Three in King George and Stafford County, case on roads, the same road that Bob lives on. I farm different farms all down through whatever. I appreciate you considering me to farm this land, and I guarantee I'll make you proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Anyone else on my left like to speak on the issue?
I don't need my glasses. I'm the son of an Eagle Scout. I really am proud of that daughter coming up here. What I'm frustrated at is here I am in a public hearing in the 21st century-
Please state your name.
Paul Waldowski, eight-picket lane. I'm sorry, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Here I am in a public hearing in the 21st century, and I've got more notes than I could put together a PowerPoint slideshow. And I know that Mr. Young is a third-generation farmer, born in 1957, been farming since 1942, and in the bicentennial year, he's one of two farmers who got an award, the FFA, from the President of the United States. And here we are, we have staffers who come in here and make a decision with, based off it. It must feel good, but does it do good? Now, I'm not here to make the decision. I'm not in charge, but I know what we should be doing. And I'll go back to my father, who told me, "You work smart, you work hard, you make your own luck." This man has exceeded expectations, and I'm sure Mr. Henderson has also done the same concept. He's got 50-plus years of farming. When I heard the original staff report, it was three years. Well, when you listen to the other side of the story, there's 40 years. And there are two sides to the story, and then, you know, sometimes you have to go to court, and then there's the truth. Now, maybe we've got to have some kind of compromise here or some other aspect, but Lady Justice has a blindfold on. She doesn't wear a pirate's patch. I don't want to see a win-lose situation. I want to see a win-win out of this aspect. And I'm really curious to watch this vote. This is a highly emotional-type aspect, and I believe that you need to defer this. Let's get all the facts on the table. If they've got bushhogs out of there, they've got these broken lines of these cedar trees. I keep bringing up to you about these evergreen cedar tree garbage trees that are all over this county, and you think someone's not taking care of this stuff? Well, we've got people who live off the land. I lived in the Midwest 15 years, so I know all about what it's like to see the trees on Arbor Day in Nebraska. And most people know, I love treetops, I hate rooftops. And we keep on making too many rooftops, and we're not taking care of the land, and y'all need to look back on Colossians 2:8. Beware of the falsehoods of men and not of things according to Christ.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on my left, or anyone else in the room that'd like to comment on the issue? Then I'll bring it back to the board. Mr. Sterling.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Obviously, we've got two individuals who are interested in farming the property, both who've got qualifications to do so, interest, intent, desire, and history in the farming community. You can't pick both. It just isn't an efficient way to go about it. And I really look at, this property was donated by Mr. Green, and it's for the purpose of Parks and Rec, which we will eventually put it into that use. In the meantime, we are continuing what he was doing with it, which is leasing it out or providing it out for farming. And while we're not in a position, and never will be, of going in and looking at each of these individuals and all the various elements, and quite frankly, for the amount of money we get, we probably spent far more than that advertising this and going through the process, so I'm not, didn't serve the taxpayers going that approach. No offense, Jamie, but I know that those directions came down from on high to go through this. But I look at this, and I think we have to go back to the underlying issue of Mr. Green was leasing this out. We have to honor what Mr. Green was doing. He is the donator, donator, whatever the proper word is, donor of this property, and he had entrusted the tillage, the working of this property to an individual, and I see no reason that we should change it at this point in time. So I would move that we continue to lease it out to the current individual who is working the, working the farm. No offense to the other. Again, this is one of those things where I'm sure both are qualified, and I'm not passing judgment on the individuals. This is simply a case of, we're going to, I would recommend that we follow and respect what Mr. Green was doing during his lifetime since he donated the property.
I have a motion to deny the resolution, to leave it the way it is. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Mrs. Sellers' discussion.
Sir?
Yes, Mr. Millie.
Do we, do we know what the intent of the donor was? Is that, I'm just curious, if that's just a, something we're assuming?
The land had been farmed-
The land had been farmed previously and we continue to farm it because it takes less maintenance from our staff to have to maintain the property. So we just continue with the practice as it was until we determined.
I'm just saying, do we, was there any direction from the donor? He took the time to give us, in his will, will us the property. Did he mention anything about who he wanted to farm?
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
Is anyone aware of that?
Ms. Chair, we would need to double-check that, Mr. Millie. My, my understanding is that the deed requires that the property be used for parkland, but I, we have to check to see if there were any specifics with respect to the maintenance of it.
Court, I agree with you. This is an extremely hard call to make and in both parties seem more than capable and more than deserving of it. I don't know what the intent of the owner was and for that, maybe in his end of years, he wasn't really interested in shopping for a new farmer. But I do have to put some weight in the staff on this. I've got a lot of calls on this and a lot of people that I know are not going to be happy with my, with my position on this, but I think we should honor the staff's recommendation. So whether I had any votes to go along with that, I'm going to have to stick with the staff's recommendation without any evidence that we've made, that the staff made a mistake in their determination.
Before going further, I once again failed to close the public hearing. I'm having a terrible night. Please dock my pay.
And give it to me.
Any other further discussion? Let me ask a question, Ms. Porter. I, I agree with Mr. Sterling and with Mr. Millie. I mean, we've got two, two farms here, two farmers that, and I understand the situation they're in. Land is becoming very, very scarce in Stafford County and as it is everywhere. And I understand this is a very big deal for both of them. And from what I've seen and everything I've read and the calls I'm getting, they're equally qualified. I don't think there's any question about that. But we have more parkland in Stafford County. For example, we've got Musselman Park, which is, was a working farm. I don't know how many acres that is, if you could look at that, but what I would suggest, if we can do this, and if they would agree, whoever gets Duff, the other farmer gets Musselman. That's wide-open land, no trees. Hansford Abel farmed that property for years. It was a cattle farm, then they turned it into growing. It's, in my opinion, I'm not an expert, that would be a perfect solution and everybody would come out, as Mr. Waldowski said, on a win-win. Could you check into that?
Yes, sir, I can.
Thank you.
One more question.
Yes.
If that's, I don't know if we're allowed, we have to go out for, with RFIs. We're not, are we allowed to pick people that way? Are we allowed to do that?
It does need to be, it's a use of a, well, go ahead.
No, Mr. Millie, an RFI is not required. I believe it was chosen in this situation to get information, but it's not a requirement to lease county-owned property.
And, I'm not trying to be controversial, but we went out.
I don't think, I'm sorry. I don't think that was your question. Your, your question was, is, is board action required to lease it?
No, no. My question was, do we have to, can we actually make the decision that if one person gets the one farm, one, the other farmer could get it without going on the street again and giving, opening it up to the whole world?
We do, but, but a public hearing is required.
Right. But we don't have to accept more applicants.
Right.
That's my question. Right. The other problem is that the intent, we, we asked, we put this out there and two people applied and they both, I'm assuming, it costs a little bit of money and maybe a lot of time to put together the package to the county. There's a cost involved if we decide to reverse the decision. And what I just heard is that the other guy never had a chance because we overlooked the fact that the intent of the original owner was, you know, never to change farmers. I, I don't, I don't know if the county's interested in reimbursing if Mr. Young loses his, loses his bid at the last minute. If he is entitled to any compensation, it certainly would seem fair. And, and maybe it's a rhetorical question, but I just think it's, I just think it's unfair.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Sterling.
I think you'll note from my editorial comments before, I'm a little disappointed we put anybody through this, what is a diminished amount, probably cost taxpayers more money. The property was being tilled, it was being utilized and maintained, there was not a problem identified other than, well, let's go do this. And, you know, there's, at some point in time, common sense has to weigh in. It's like, are we going to spend more money to put this out and create a bunch of confusion than we're ever going to receive in a benefit? I kind of like what Mr. Snelling's talking about is if the other individual would like to farm the other property and in fact, maybe it should be looked at in other cases where we own property of that nature in the county. I don't know of much others that we're not putting to use at this point in time. But I, people in the, whenever they submit government bids, all the time, there's an expense associated with that. You put it in, you either win or you lose. It's just like you and your private business. You spend money to get bids and you don't get reimbursed if you don't get it. It came to us for us to make a judgment. Mr. Green, when he donated the property, had been utilizing it in a specific way and had chosen somebody to till it during his lifetime. I can't say that his will stipulated it will go and it will in perpetuity be tilled by that individual, but I think you do have to honor the fact that he had allowed it and he had chosen that particular individual for the period of time. And absent a noticeable reason to change that, I, I just don't see a reason to go forward with changing what he had done.
Mr. Chairman, I promise that'll be it. Is it, I don't know when, when you start tilling land and planting seeds, and I'm not a farmer, but do we have time to bring that information back about what other land we have available so that we can make that decision all at once? Just seeing, I, I worry about putting this off, you know, promising somebody something later and I'm not sure, I'd like to, is it possible we have time to do something like that, look at the Musselman tract?
I can't answer that question. I agree with you, I'm not a farmer either and I don't know, I know they're coming up, bumping up on the season, depends on the crop, depends on a lot of things, so.
I don't think he's growing much right now. I'm not a farmer, but.
Ms. Bumpkin.
Well, I, I mean, I think one thing that's important in, in my conversations with both of these farmers is that one reason it was so attractive is because it's right down the street from Mr. Young and then the Hendersons farm a lot of property out in that area, so it makes that piece of property a lot more competitive. But, you know, if you're looking at Musselman Park, that's not really, or any other park in the area, so I don't know if that.
That's a good point.
Exactly. There, there's a lot more into that equation and I know that neither of them, that nothing was planted on the land in light of this whole issue coming before the board.
Any other comments? The motion on the floor is to deny staff, staff recommendation to award contract to the Blaisdell Farm. Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion carries five to one with one abstention.
We do, we have to vote.
I'm sorry?
I think it would be appropriate for the board to make a motion, approve a motion to authorize a lease.
So. Motion and second to authorize a lease, enter discussion. Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes, six to zero, one abstention. Getting back to the original schedule, item number 22.
Mr. Snelling, can somebody get Mr. Thomas?
Oh, yes. I thought he'd be watching some television back there or something. Let's take a five-minute break.
Moving forward with the agenda, item number 22 and item number 23 concerning transfer of development rights, we're going to combine those two public hearings. Item 22, consider comprehensive plan amendments regarding transfer of development rights. Item 23, consider amendments to the transfer of development rights ordinance. Ms. Baker?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kathy Baker with the Department of Planning and Zoning. And as you referred to, I'll be talking about transfer of development rights with regard to the comprehensive plan amendment and zoning ordinance amendments. Just for the viewing public who may not have heard any presentations on TDR yet, transfer of development rights, or TDR, is a means of allowing by right development to be transferred from designated sending areas in the county to designated receiving areas through the exchange of development rights. And this is a means to protect rural areas and encourage development closer to the developed areas where we have public services. TDR is a voluntary program. Each transferred development right would be developed as a single-family unit, or it could be also, it could be developed as commercial square footage in the receiving area. In this case, the commercial square footage would equate to 3,000 square feet for each development right. A deed of easement, a deed and an easement would restrict further development on the sending area property. And also note the capacity of the receiving area would have to be able to receive all the potential development rights under by right zoning. The board did adopt an ordinance for TDR back in 2013, however, the additional comprehensive plan amendments were not adopted or implemented at that time. In June of last year, the board did discuss this again and refer to new comp plan amendment, as well as an ordinance amendment to the planning commission for their review. With regard to the comprehensive plan amendments, the proposal would modify chapter three of the comp plan, which would include textual language outlining the TDR program. It would also include new state code provisions, which were recently adopted for architectural design standards in the receiving areas. It'd also adopt a new map depicting these sending and receiving areas. And this is the comprehensive plan map. The sending area that you see to the right, outlined in blue, is bounded by Aquia Creek to the north, Potomac Creek to the south, and the CSX railroad tracks to the west. The receiving area would be around the courthouse and is congruent with the redevelopment area and the courthouse area, except it's just limited to the east side of I-95. You know, the, if you notice in the sending area, the comprehensive plan designation would be agricultural and rural, which is the light green, or it would be park designation, which you see in the dark green. In the sending areas, the property would need to be zoned A1 or A2, would need to be 20 acres in size, either as one individual parcel or a combined acreage of several parcels that would be adjacent. Could also be a two-acre parcel minimum if it were located within the park designation on the comp plan, which is the dark green areas again. Then the receiving area, excuse me, the area would be congruent, as I said, with the redevelopment area. It is located within the urban services area. The receiving area could accommodate approximately 2,240 development units, according to our GIS calculations. In the sending area there are approximately 1,490 that could be sent. The zoning in your receiving area would be A1, R1, PD1, PD2, PTND, UD, or B3. And just to give you an example of how the development rights could be transferred, if you look in within the sending area, the pink property that you see highlighted, this is just random, we've taken a 60-acre portion of property which has 30 by right lots, and just hypothetically saying this equates to 30 development rights, or 30 lots. In your receiving area, the parcel you see in the pink has 50 by right lots, it's approximately 33 acres and zoned R1. You can transfer up to 14 units into the receiving area under the ordinance, the way it is drafted. So between these two parcels, these two areas, you have a total of 80 lots. So if you take your sending area property, you take your 30 development rights with that, and you transfer that over to your receiving area, then that parcel, you have your 50 by right lots, you add to it those 30 development rights, and you have a total of 80 lots. So you would have a conservation easement or a restriction on the remaining property. You would sever the development rights, so there would be no lots left in this area. So you still have a total of 80 lots between these two properties. Just one more slide to note the public services that you have. If you look at your roads, the network that you have out to this sending area property, it's, see, the receiving area property is about a quarter mile from your R1 and Courthouse Road intersection. If you look out at the other property, it's about a little over five and a half miles from this same area. You also have three schools right in the vicinity, as well as your water and sewer service that ends in this area. So about four, little over four miles from the edge of the urban services area out to the rural area in Crow's Nest Harbor. Additional comprehensive plan amendments include modifications to the neighborhood development standards plan element of the comp plan, and the primary change to this is changing language to incorporate the architectural design standards into the receiving area.
Yes, Ms. Sellers?
Is, are those architectural standards based on how it was zoned in the, in the sending area, or how are we doing the architectural standards?
The current architectural design development plan talks about different design features that are for properties located, say, within the courthouse redevelopment area. The language would just be specific in referencing development to be compatible with these development, the neighborhood development plan. So there are recommendations that you see in this plan that would give you guidance on how the looks of the property would, the development would be.
So they would have to look like the neighborhood design plan, or?
Correct.
Okay.
In, in the receiving area.
And, and the, as it's zoned in the, in the receiving area, are there architectural design standards, the by, if they were developed right now in, in Crow's Nest Harbor, are there architectural design standards for those homes?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you.
A follow-up.
Ms. Millie?
The design standards that would be imposed on, I find, remember the legislation, it's, you had to have an existing design standards for an area, and then you were allowed to impose those on the transferred in development rights. And that just passed the general assembly at our request. But these would be similar or almost identical to what we had asked for in the rezoning?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so we don't, we're not rezoning, but we can impose the same design standards on the development rights brought in?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anything else on the comp plan before I move into the ordinance amendments?
Yeah, if we're going to ask, I want to just real quick touch on proffers. Were you going to hit on proffers, or have you already skipped, is that, have you passed that point?
I wasn't going to be specific with proffers.
Well, I'm just going to ask a question that I, I know the answer to, because I want everyone else to know the answer to it. On the units that could be sent from the sending area, how much, how much in proffers are we going to capture if we just let them develop as demand, you know, pushes them to be developed by their owners?
Under by right development?
Right now?
We're not going to have any proffers.
No proffers.
Required.
Are there proffers in Crow's Nest Harbor attached to those?
No, there's no proffers.
So when you bring them up here next to services, you can't take proffers from them either?
We would not be required to have proffers on those receiving areas.
My understanding is it's not allowed by the TDR legislation, the general assembly enabled?
That is correct.
And not, would make sense, since they're not going to pay proffers wherever they're built. But it might cost less to serve them, because they're five, or five or so, six miles. You could go further. The sending area goes all about to Marlborough Point and down to the very end of Courthouse Road. Those areas even further away, fire and rescue, buses, is it presumably a savings in having to serve, not serve as many people, or is that a?
That's one of the general concepts behind, behind the growth area, the urban services area, and areas outside.
Now, we did pass transportation impact fees in this county. I think we're one of the only counties to have those, at least. Do you still collect transportation? You could get, you get those on any, any lot that's getting developed now, right, in Stafford?
And new development.
New development.
Is that correct, yeah?
By right, so they, you're not going to, are we, are we going to lose any transportation impact fees if this passes?
Not, not necessarily. No.
No, thank you.
It's a short answer.
This is, this is fresh ground, thank you.
Not sure I answered that, but.
Any other questions before she moves to the ordinance itself? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Baker.
Okay. So at this point, what was advertised are two specific ordinances. We have two versions. One is the original board version, that was referred to the planning commission back in June. We also have a version that was initiated by the planning commission. When they were reviewing the board's version, they made some changes, which they thought would, it was in response to some of the public comment that was received. So the board did authorize in January for this version to go forward to public hearing as well. So we're talking about both of those. And just to note that the board could consider both elements from either ordinance as they're going through discussions if, if you opt to, to adopt an ordinance, since they were both advertised. So just want to talk about the similarities. Both ordinances would revise the criteria for your qualifying sending properties. You zoned A1 or A2, it would be the minimum of 20 acres, as, as I said, either contiguous parcels or one parcel at a minimum 20 acres. Or there is a minimum two-acre requirement if it's designated park on the comprehensive plan. Both ordinances also specify that no new buildings or structures would be allowed on sending properties that remain at 20 acres, and, for letting any properties that's less than 20 acres. It would also clarify that sending properties designated park are not restricted from development based on previously platted notes. Both ordinances also add language for the receiving areas to require the architectural standards to include B3 as a, as a eligible receiving zoning district, and also to require property be, be located within the redevelopment area. Both ordinances also clarify a reduction in the A1 density from five dwelling units per acre to 2.25 dwelling units per acre. This was actually an oversight, the original ordinance that was adopted in, in 2013, it should have been specified at 2.25 dwelling units at that time. To describe the primary differences, you see the board's version on the left-hand column and the planning commission's version on the right. Looking at the first row, the board's version includes a recordation of covenants as a means to transfer the development rights. The planning commission's version adds an option for a permanent conservation easement by a qualified holder to be a means. So that would be in addition to the, the covenants there would be in either or there. The second provision, the board's version includes a provision that entitles all parcels that are existing to at least one development right, regardless of the ability to develop that, that parcel. And I'll go into a little bit more detail to explain that in a minute. The planning commission's version does not include this provision. The third difference in the board's version, you have that no new buildings or structures would be allowed on properties less than 20 acres in size. While the planning commission still has this allowance in it, it also adds the limitation on the residual use of the sending property with the park designation. And the two residual uses would be agriculture, and that would be only on parcels 20 acres or greater. The second residual use would be a non-commercial campground. At the last, I'm sorry.
Ms. Sellers has a question.
I do. Specific to the agricultural uses, would that include lumbering?
Timbering is a part of it.
Or whatever it's called.
Is, is considered agricultural.
And they would be able to use it. And so how would, this is greater than 20 acres in size, so could groups of people or landowners get together and, what is it, timber, timbering? And sell their, their, their lumber, or?
Well, if a, if a parcel, if property owners are going to do a transfer of development rights, easement or the, the covenants would have to encumber all of the combined parcels that are going to go to that transfer. So if you have five two-acre lots that equal, well, I didn't do that math right, but if you have enough lots to equal 20 acres, that entire clump, collection of parcels is going to be subject to, to that restriction. So if it's greater than 20 acres, they can do farming or forestry. If it's less than 20, as the combined total, then they could not.
So they can't transfer their development rights and then come together and decide, we could sell some, some trees and make some money. They'd have to do that. This agreement would have to be made in the beginning, or am I not understanding what you're saying?
As soon as the, the, once all the negotiations or the, the easement or the covenants are recorded, they're going to, already have been recorded on, the lots are going to be predetermined, because an applicant's going to come in, they're going to ask us to determine how many development rights they have on either their individual parcel or their collection of parcels. And at that time, we're going to look at the total acreage, we're going to do the calculations, and the easement or the covenants would go over those parcels that they've come in to apply for. Does that make sense?
Yeah, kind of, kind of. And so the, the conservation easement option, what does that do for the, for the county exactly? I mean, what, what benefit?
The, the benefit there is having perhaps a third party that is going to be a co, co-holder for an easement, and so they would have the monitoring capabilities, they would be able to oversee that, the management of an easement.
Okay. Thanks.
One last point on the, the residual uses. Mr. Sterling had asked at the last meeting when this was brought up whether parks is a residual use, the way it's written. We did go back and look at this, and we believe it was an inadvertent omission of park, because in another area of the ordinance, it discusses parks being the residual use. So we would recommend that if, if that component is adopted, that park land, park be inserted. And if you look in your board package for the ordinances, there is language in there that, that adds the park to that component. So going back to the entitlement of one development right, regardless of the development potential, we had our GIS department take a look at the lots under the planning commission's proposal. And I'll note, first of all, there is a calculation for determining the development right on a property, and it is based on gross acreage. So if you look at your gross acreage and you subtract out the hydroic soils and 25% slopes, in addition to any easements or right-of-way necessary, that's going to equal your number of development rights. So we did take a look at the, a map that was generated by our GIS department, and there's a potential for 79 of those Crow's Nest Harbor lots that could potentially be impacted. We, we took the percentage of the slopes and the soils on that, and if it, if the development right was less than one, that's how we came up to the determination of those 79 lots. We do note that that is the potential of that lot as an individual lot. It doesn't, it doesn't take into consideration if that lot were combined with any adjacent lots in order to get the number of development, development rights. And I'll show you the map in just a moment. But overall, we do note that approximately 36% of the land area within the Crow's Nest Harbor lots are encumbered by hydroic soils and 25% slope. So this does show the map of the properties with the slopes in, in the brown or orange color, and then your hydroic soils. And the hatch lots that you see are the ones that, again, just strictly by GIS generation and no field work can, that has been conducted, that shows the potential parcels that could be impacted.
Yes, Ms. Millie?
Leave this up. I'm quite, I'm curious about this. May, keep it that picture back, please. That's what leave this up means. What's your, in your experience, when a developer comes in to develop a piece of property, because I'm, because my understanding is that each of these green lots who are, would be excluded from this version, the planning commission's version, would really be able to come in and make an argument on their individual lot to see if that hydroic soil is really there, or steep slopes are really there. Because this is just done from a very, very, literally bird's eye view, or satellite view, right?
Correct.
In old, old maps. So do, do developers, will they, they go down on the ground when they start coming in to develop? We must see this all the time, where you think it's one way, and the developer comes in and tries to argue that they have less hydroic soils or steep slopes. Is that a common practice? Do they, do the developers use the maps you're using, or do they hire engineers and surveyors to come out and prove that they have more developable land?
Actually, in our experience, an applicant's going to have that option. They're going to have their property surveyed and engineered, and whether they need to make a determination on the slopes and the hydroic soils, they can do that. The, the hydroic soils is, I guess we'll take that separately from the slopes, because if we believe that there's RPA on a property, we're going to request a perennial flow analysis, which is going to determine your, your hydroic soils. So an applicant is, would have the ability to come in and submit their own individual soil studies or perennial flow analysis to determine, or soil samples, they would have that option to do that.
Those 79 lots would have kind of a process to try to get relief if it's, if it's to be had. Thank you.
So I will follow up, because I'm sure there will be questions, just to indicate that staff does support adoption of the amendments to the comprehensive plan. We do note that it would provide a TDR program to be functional, and it would comply with the recommendations that are within the comprehensive plan. If the comprehensive plan were to be adopted, even if the ordinances aren't adopted, we would note that because the existing ordinance is already on the books, that, that just the comprehensive plan alone, by adopting that feature, would enact a transfer, transfer of development rights program. With the comprehensive plan, there is a deadline for action on that, March 10th, and that's based on state, state code and when the planning commission approved it.
Yeah, but if you just passed the comprehensive plan part, you'd have a different version of the, than what we've come to now after a couple more years?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
With regard to the zoning text amendments, either ordinance may be considered, as I stated, or the components of either may be considered. We would recommend that at a minimum, that the clarification to the A1 density be, be considered. We also note that we would request 60 days for an effective adoption date if adopted, to give staff time to have all the appropriate applications and paperwork prepared. The planning commission recommended approval of their version 015-06 in December, and recommended denial of the board's version 015-05. One last piece to note is the recommendation that if the planning commission's version or that component be adopted, that the park language be inserted into that. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. It's in section 28, 359. Oh, in your background report, yes, on the ordinance section, there's a paragraph that was inserted that says what the language should actually read on page three.
Any other questions for Ms. Baker? Yes, Ms. Bunkley?
You didn't say that it was unanimous, you just said that it was approved by the planning commission. Were there some nay votes?
I forgot what the vote was. Give me just a second, I can look at that.
Okay, it was Daryl. Okay.
Oh.
Thank you.
It's six to one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Sellers, question?
Okay, say we pass this, and then in a year, we find that we absolutely hate this. Can we change it? Can we go back and remove the whole program? And what does that look like?
Ms. Sellers, yes, you can repeal this. It's just an ordinance, and you can repeal it as an ordinance. The only thing to consider is that any development rights that have been severed from their property and are kind of still floating in the air and have not been placed, they still have to be allowed to be placed, because they are property rights.
Do they have to be placed in the sending area, and then we just be done with it, or?
Receiving it.
Receiving it.
That's correct.
And do they have an amount of time that they have to place those rights?
Because they are property rights, we can't limit them. Once they are severed, we can't allow them not to be placed. It would be kind of impinging on their property rights.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, staff? Ms. Bunkley?
Yes, obviously, with a proposal like this, it's going to require additional staff time. Does your department have the staff to do all the monitoring? And, I mean, there's a And, I mean, there's a tremendous amount to this TDR program, as you know. Um, have you all discussed that in your department?
Uh, we have. Um, I don't know if Mr. Harvey wants to address that? Is there anything that we have talked about that we haven't considered?
Yes, Ms. Bonkey, we've had some discussions about the processing of applications and the, um, issuance of certificates for the development rights, and, and also, um, having those development rights land and expire after they've been incorporated into a new development project. We haven't had significant discussions about monitoring the, um, covenants on the property after that development right's been severed. Um, that's something that would be a responsibility of the county. However, as Ms. Baker said, if, uh, a third-party conservation group is, um, uh, added to the conservation easement, then that could be something that the county could negotiate with them as far as who does it and at what interval. But currently, we, the county does own land that we monitor the activities on, but, um, we haven't determined a specific set program for that purpose.
Thank you.
Any other questions, staff? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Uh, I would ask that when you come to the podium, that you are allowed to speak three minutes. When you see the green light come on, um, state your name and address. The yellow light gives you about a minute left, the red light means wrap it up. With that said, also, and please give your name and address. With that said, I'll start on my right, anyone on my right wishing to address this issue?
My name is Cecily Kirkman. I reside at 447 Raven Road in Stafford on the Crowsnest Peninsula. I'm here tonight to recommend denial of the TDR as currently written and of the comprehensive plan amendments. First, the potential cost to Stafford County taxpayers could amount to more than $70 million in lost proffer revenues. Some people will argue that it's a wash because there are no proffers for by right development. But that is not the case. That's because we're talking about development in agricultural areas that may or may not be built, and in the cro, case of Crowsnest Harbor, may never be built, versus development in the urban development area that we know will be built. Another consideration is that the lots in the harbor in total aren't worth more than about a million to a million and a half. If this is the county's priority, it seems to me it would be a lot cheaper and a lot less risky for the county to buy the harbor lots outright than to launch this TDR program. Purchase would also end all the legal wrangling. Second, because this legislation makes increased density in the receiving areas by right, it removes what are essentially high-density rezonings from the control of the board. Third, this legislation as written fails to achieve the desired outcomes of protecting the rural and agricultural parts of our county, and in particular, saving all of Crowsnest. In the case of the existing Crowsnest Harbor subdivisions, the way that the TDR ordinance is structured, the owners can place some, but not all of the lots into TDRs. That means they can keep the best lots to build on and put some or all of the rest into TDR. All of the land can be logged, even the lots in TDR. Then the lots can be consolidated into 10 to 25-acre parcels and sold as estate lots for development. This TDR as written could actually speed up development of Crowsnest instead of preventing it. Honestly, the TDR ordinance has so many loopholes in it, you could drive, well, you could drive a logging truck through it. And that's because of this loophole about you can aggregate up multiple little parcels to meet the 20-acre min, minimum. I've been working on this now for over a decade. There are some of you on the board now that were on the board when I first stood up and spoke about this issue. I want to see a solution to Crowsnest as much as everyone else in this room, and I do believe everybody wants to see a solution to Crowsnest. But this TDR is just not it. Vote it down tonight, start over, and try the pilot of the TDR somewhere else, smaller, not as controversial. Hartwood, George Washington, maybe even the land around the airport, there are plenty of good potential projects that don't have the controversy so, associated with this, and the lack of consensus. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right would like to speak for or against the? Seeing none, I'll move to my left. Anyone on my left speaking for or against? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. My name is Patrick Cody. I'm chairman of the Northern Virginia Conservation Trust, uh, located at 4022 Hummer Road in Annandale. Um, we delivered a letter of February 12th, I think, which all the supervisors got. Uh, from the very get-go of this, uh, we were, uh, supportive of the idea of a TDR as a mechanism to, uh, help achieve, uh, our mission, not only around the heronry in Crowsnest Harbor, but for open space in the Crowsnest Peninsula. Of course, the struggle's been how to, how to have a TDR ordinance that we thought would be effective and, and move forward. Uh, we've kind of gotten to this point now, and we worked, uh, hopefully constructively with the Planning Commission on making some improvements. Uh, the one thing which kind of blindsided us, which we noted in our letter, was the, the question of, uh, declaring certain lots, uh, being undevelopable. And that is problematic in our point of view from a number of points of view. Uh, it's, it's like for 30 years later, the county decides there are certain lots undevelopable, um, even though the taxes are the same for all the lots. And from the get-go of this ordinance, I think the idea was, um, I mean, the Crowsnest Harbor is beautiful because it has a lot of ravines and a lot, you know, and it's not great, great agricultural lots. But I think the idea was, as, not only in addition to, um, you know, the whole sending area, was that each lot would, um, have a TDR. This would simplify the process of trying to, from our point of view, have them migrate into the existing, uh, preserves. So creating two classes of citizens at, at this point creates, I think, some interesting equity values. So you take away these 79 lots, so now you have fewer TDRs going, so the price, so the value of the TDR goes up, so you've had kind of two values of lots, and you're taxing them all the same. So it just seems to be both the context of where the starting point of this whole exercise was, and the problems related to the segregation. And I don't think that this GIS study's been done for any other property in the sending area. So it's just kind of been, you, kind of a unique exercise, it, it, kind of irrelevant from our point of view. It's surprising. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on my left? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Stafford Board of Supervisors. My name is Linda Muller. I reside at 109 Dishpan Lane. And I believe there is an undeniable agreement that's, in, that Stafford citizens want to save Crowsnest. And the way to do that has been determined through a TDR, transfer of development rights. Now, it is a relatively simple concept, and I appreciate the two short paragraphs that were provided by Kathy, in which you take this valuable property we know as Crowsnest. It's ecologically sensitive and unique. And then we bundle it up and give it a value and send it off somewhere else to be developed in another location. That's a simple concept. Unfortunately, the devil is in the details. You have to wade through the weeds to get to the, to the, uh, the mead of the, of the ordinance, and that's where the problem rests. I trust the knowledge and experience of the Northern Virginia Conservation Trust, and I was glad to hear the, hear the gentleman speak this evening. And they've indicated there are specific issues with this particular TDR. I think folks are in agreement that a TDR can work. It's this particular one that seems to be the problem with its unique challenges. Um, the TDR ordinance and the proposed amendment does not preserve all the lots of Crowsnest Harbor in a timely, unambiguous manner. At least, this is how it's been described through the Northern Virginia Conservation Trust. They also point out that the proposed TDR amendment allows for certain rights, including timbering, agriculture, and camping, to be retained after extracting the valuable development rights. I believe that the, um, presentation this evening was a little confusing. Um, I'm not a planner, but I try to follow along with what has been presented this evening. And it, it seems that it, this particular TDR does not meet the goals of truly preserving and conserving Crowsnest. So I hope that this evening you will vote no, but I know you are all so well and able to come back with a more effective and, and better, uh, proposed TDR. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left? Come on up.
Uh, good evening, members of the board. My name is Patricia Kerpeel. I live at 38 Dobie Point Road, and I actually own one of the Crowsnest Harbor lots. That is Lot 49D. I purchased this lot for conservation purposes. I knew, just like every other owner of a Crowsnest Harbor lot, when they purchased, that that property could not be built upon. I want my lot, and I think it's 345 others, to be added to the natural heritage area that already exists. How can this be done? I don't think the comp plan amendments and the ordinance before you tonight accomplishes that goal. I have three specific questions, and these three questions have already been addressed by two earlier speakers, so I'll go quickly through them. Would the owner of multiple lots be allowed to keep one of those lots out of the TDR sending area so that he could build upon an estate-sized lot at some later date? Number two, would logging, camping, or multiple other destructive activities be allowed on the sending lots? And I heard tonight that lots over 20 acres, that would be allowed, and this is just not consistent with conservation. And finally, what incentive exists in these documents for TDR senders to contribute the sending lots to the Crowsnest preservation area? So then to summarize, whatever you pass needs to address these three questions clearly, or the already spent $34 million will have been wasted. Protect the public interest, please. Vote no tonight, and take a fresh look at the ordinance and the comp plan amendments to support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kerpeel. Mr. Lemming.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Clark Lemming. I represent the two largest owners in Crowsnest Harbor, 7K, which owns about 120 lots, and various organizations associated with the Marriott family, which own 140 lots. We, uh, believe it or not, there, there, we probably have a whole lot more in common with some of the prior speakers than you, you might initially think. And we believe that the concept of transfer of development rights is a good idea, uh, but we're talking about a particular ordinance here. And from the landowner's standpoint, we effectively have, uh, two choices. Uh, one, and, and right now, we're presuming both of them, as you know. Uh, one is to continue to try to develop, uh, Crowsnest Harbor. Uh, these are recorded lots, uh, and I think probably we can agree at some point, uh, because they are recorded lots, uh, lots of record, uh, that there is going to be, or that they can be, development in Crowsnest Harbor. The owners understand that the county would like to see something else. And I, I hope that you have recognized that the owners have attempted to, uh, accomplish, uh, your objectives in a manner that is consistent with their own, uh, investment, uh, both time and financial in Crowsnest Harbor to this point. And there are effectively two subchoices for them. Uh, one is to continue to try to come up with a TDR ordinance that works. Uh, this one has some significant issues, which I'll touch on in just a moment. Uh, the other is to try to come up with another way to actually transfer density. And I think you all are aware that we have put such proposals, uh, before the county. Uh, one is a zoning application, uh, that would move the 7K lots, uh, over to a property also owned by 7K on Route 1. Uh, the other is a proposal to, uh, move lots by proffer, uh, to another large tract. Uh, we think both of these things accomplish the same, the same purpose, uh, and would, uh, address, uh, 250 to 260 of the 340 approximately Crowsnest Harbor lots. The issues with the TDR ordinance, the pla, I won't even get into the Planning Commission amendment because that becomes so cumbersome. I, I don't know, I don't know how the county would determine that pre-Ches Bay recorded lots were undevelopable for any purpose. Uh, certainly from the standpoint of the owners, it's a real disincentive to even participate in the program if they know they're gonna lose lots. The other big problem is the, from the developer's standpoint, the owner's standpoint, is the receiving areas. And those have been significantly cut back from your, from the last effort, which identified it was, I think, most of the, of the UDAs within the county. Uh, now, we're just down to one. Uh, and that makes it more, even more difficult to work out all of the things that would have to be worked out with an owner in that courthouse redevelopment area.
Mr. Lemming, your time is done.
Even though I represent all these parties, Mr. Lemming.
Mr. Lemming, this is not, this is a public hearing. It's not a, you're not the applicant tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Anyone else on my left care to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward.
My name is Conrad Meehan. I reside at 911.
You could raise that mic up, this little guy.
Oh, okay.
Raise it right up. There you go. Thank you.
A better? Okay. I'll repeat it. Conrad Meehan, um, I reside at 9111 Ballybunyan Drive in Fredericksburg. I'm a member of the Advisory Board of the Conservation Trust and a former board member. Uh, I'll keep it brief. I wanted to highlight to you tonight, uh, the trust's commitment to protect the herons and having Crowsnest Harbor become part of the existing, uh, natural area preserve. Uh, the trust is, has a long history, as all of you do, in the effort to make Crowsnest Harbor an important environmental asset, um, that improves the quality of life of, for all the Stafford County citizens. And with that in mind, I, I want to thank you and, um, you know, for all of your attention to this matter, and, and consider the trust's position, um, on the matter before you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Anyone else on my left care to speak?
My name is Douglas Brown. I live at 5 Franz Court, um, and have been a resident of Stafford since 1985. Um, I'm here tonight to ask for your vote in favor of, uh, ordinance 15-5. Uh, as all of you know, this issue has been around for over five years. Um, I've heard some things I was not fully aware of as far as some of the details of the proposal, but, um, the, the ordinance before you tonight, I feel, is, is been a result of a hard-fought compromise that, that promotes growth in the courthouse redevelopment area, uh, while limiting development in, in Crowsnest. To me, this is a win-win proposition. As an urban planner, I believe in smart growth, and rule number one is you promote density in the growth area, and you reduce sprawl, uh, by preserving rural land. I think everybody does agree that doing, that preserving Crowsnest Harbor is the right thing to do. For some, the wisdom of promoting density in the growth area, uh, is another matter. Andre Dewaney, who's the author of many, uh, new urbanism books, talks about how, um, you know, uh, dens, density in the growth area is not, uh, for everyone, just like three-acre lots. Um, in rural areas, you're not for everyone. And to me, the idea of promoting compact development in the courthouse area is an important growth management tool. Um, I did review, uh, the, the two versions, uh, over the weekend, and have a couple I did review the two versions over the weekend and have a couple of comments. As far as the architectural guidelines go, I think this will ensure an even-handed enforcement of developing in the courthouse RDA. The idea before about, you know, we spend all this time and money to promote the courthouse area, just give somebody free rein, I think this is a good compromise as far as ensuring that you get quality development in the courthouse area. The issue about proffers was not addressed much. I mean, I know for some board members, this is a contentious issue. I don't have time to go into all of that, but I believe that the people who claim tens of million dollars will be lost in lost proffer revenues really don't believe that the property owners, they have any rights at all. And show me someone who is against this ordinance, and I think I'll show you someone that does not believe in smart growth. As far as the checkerboard development, I think, I understand their concerns. This is a pilot program, and really, I think the solution is to create a viable market for the development lots. I mean, you know, personally, I would like to see this expanded at some point, but I think as a pilot program, you know, it's worth doing. Again, I think that everybody agrees that the development standards have evolved since 1975, but however, the property owners' claims that they have been denied use of their property has at least some merit. And approving 15-5 is a compromise between individual rights and the public good.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Anyone else on my left?
It must not be for smart growth, huh? Paul Waldowski, 8 Picket Lane. Transferable development rights is a way of controlling land use to complement zoning and strategic planning for the more effective urban growth management and land conservation like the 79 Crowsnest Harbor lots. The problem at hand is that Stafford County is a rural bedroom community with a median income that's now over $95,000 versus an urban one that Richmond bureaucrats tried to force through the Commonwealth as UDAs, you know, those undeveloped downtown areas. Yesterday was the three-year anniversary of House Bill 869 and Senate Bill 274 that designated that UDAs are optional rather than mandatory. You know, TDR is as creative, innovative, and experimental form of development control. It offers landowners who are bad financial investors in trying to get incentives or bonuses for the conservation and maintenance of the environmental heritage or agricultural values of their land. TDR is based on the concept that with land ownership comes the right of use of land or development. These land-based development rights can, in some jurisdictions, be used, unused, transferred, or sold by the owner of a parcel. You know, developers can purchase the development rights of certain properties within a designated sending district and transfer those rights to another receiving district to increase the density of their new development. What a concept. Receiving districts are generally areas more suited for higher-density developments that bring crime to rural areas. The sending districts are areas with environmental heritage and agricultural values that the county wishes to preserve. Now, as a final note, planning commissioners are selected. They're not elected representatives. Ah, it appalls me that you have a planning commission version here when you have planning commissioners who are not even in the districts where they live and they're representing it. I don't even know why this even comes up as an aspect. TDRs were developed for New York City. That's why we have Central Park. And until you all get together and find out what's the right way to do it, which probably might be the 400-year anniversary of Stafford County, how sorry that is.
Anyone else in the room care to speak on this subject? I'm bringing it back to the board. These are two separate motions. Item number 22, consider conference of plan amendments regarding transfer of development rights, R15-23. Do I have a motion?
Now, let me ask-
Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. Close the public hearing. Dot my soul money. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead. Yes.
Is that, will need to be voted on in addition to 15-5, or would that be in lieu of 15-5?
You have two options. You have in place right now, by action of this board, what, two years ago? You have a very elementary TDR ordinance. You did not adopt in a timely fashion a plan amendment, so we do not have an operative TDR program. You could take up first the plan amendment that you have before you, and if the board had the prerogative to vote that favorably, you would then have, if you did nothing more tonight, you would have a TDR program that is in place. It would not be a desirable TDR program, but there would be one in place. If you choose not to go and vote on the plan amendment first, and you go to the two ordinances that are proposed, either the board version that was sent down, or the planning commission version that was sent up, or if you want to meld or blend those two in some fashion, come up with a third or a hybrid. If you pass one of those tonight, then you go back and do the plan amendment after that. So you have a prerogative of which way you want to go. You could either go with the plan amendment, or you could go to the ordinance route. My personal preference would be, my recommendation would you should go to the ordinance. You want to go right to the heart of it to see if you can come up with some mandatory language to the ordinance that you've got right now, keeping in mind that you're under that 90-day gun on March 10th. By that time, you've got to deal with that plan amendment if you so desire, or you're going to have the same thing happen again that happened some many months ago. Did I answer your question?
Is it 15-5 that gets us talking about-
15-5 is the one you set down. 15-06 is the one the planning commission sent up to you.
So you need, but we're going to do a hybrid, so which one would you start with?
Well-
If we were going to do a hybrid?
Well, you have to decide whether you want to move 05 or 06, or you want to make an amendment to one of the two of those in your motion.
Well, for the sake of a discussion, are you asking for a motion? Is that why you brought this up?
That's what I'm asking.
15.6-
We won't do a discussion until after the motion on a second.
Then I will make a motion for the planning commission's version to start the discussion, which is 15.6.
I have a motion for 15.06. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Thomas. Discussion, Mr. Mill.
Thank you, sir. First off, I want to, the fact that Northern Virginia Conservation Trust is here after years and years of us working on this, and it's the first time they've ever come out in favor of an iteration that was actually before us is a big deal. You guys know land preservation. You've been doing it successfully in Northern Virginia for a very long time, and I think you understand what we're doing here as well as anyone could. I agree with you about the 79 lots, which we don't really know if they're 79 lots or not, that are being excluded, although I don't think this is the right time to fight to keep those in, based on my understanding of where some board members are. So if this were to pass at 15.6, I would ask the board to continue the conversation about that, do more, look into the actual hydro soils and steep slopes much more carefully. Mr. Cody spoke, and he got into a lot about his rationale for not supporting that omission, but I want to make sure we understand that he, or at least the Conservation Trust and Executive Director Peggy Stevens, would rather have 15.6 than nothing. That was told to me by Peggy Stevens. But they don't like it as much as if we made it more expansive and added 79 units into the mix. So I wanted to get that out there. I have a lot of questions, and I hope you guys will, and things to say. I know you've heard it all before. We've been doing this for, it's been several years, not five years. How long have we been working, having public hearings, and talking about TDRs and trying to get a TDR ordinance passed? Only four years? I think it's been several years. Do you don't have any public hearings we've had at the board level?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we've had, I think it's been, in my first term, I'm in my third-
Mill, let me remind you that this is a discussion period. Staff questions have already been asked.
I'm done asking questions. Okay. Then let me just, I wanted to give people a sense of comfort that it wasn't just my opinion. We've heard about proffers. You're not going to get proffers. You can't get them for a couple of reasons. I want to remind people, it's not just about Crowsnest Harbor, although that's a very sacred area. There's a lot of people, including me. You all know I represent another group that was founded in '04 that also wants to save Crowsnest Harbor, and you've all been, have seen the comments and the signatures, a couple hundred of them now, given about 10% are from strange places, but the majority of them are from right here in Stafford, who think this is a good first step. And that's what it is. It's not a save-all. It's, in my mind, it's intended to be a tool that will help, and especially if it helps take out some of the big players in this. Right now, we have four lawsuits going on that are coming down our way on this. Mr. Lemming was nice. He didn't really talk about what he's doing on the other hand, which is suing us. One day, we will, he's fighting City Hall, but I think those big guys like Marriott and K&amp;M intend on seeing this through. If they don't get what they think, get satisfaction, then they're going to wait for a judge to make a determination. So we have four lawsuits. I won't name them all, but I've got it right here. I do believe there is an option unless it was changed, and I kind of need to ask a question about this, to let a landowner in Crowsnest Harbor donate their property to the county. I heard that question come up, and I would ask, Mr. Chairman, if I could get clarification on that.
Now, your question is what now? If a landowner can donate property to the county?
Instead of just retiring their development right, can they actually give the land?
Well, I think anybody can give the land to the county if-
I just want, I heard that. Well, we heard that question come up.
But let me ask the county attorney to address it.
The county has the option to receive it.
Right.
So you will not force something on the county they do not want.
There is a mechanism for this land to come into the parkland, which is one of the questions that was raised. Like I said, it's just one tool of many. I believe that these people have a right, have rights to develop their property. We can't afford to purchase it outright. It's a great idea. We use state money to buy that $32 million worth of property. Nine and a half million came from Stafford, the most we've ever done, is most anyone's ever done. Even Northern Virginia, I don't believe, has spent that kind of money to preserve property. At least if they have, it's been rare. We can't afford to buy these development rights. I don't believe you can build estate lots at all on Crowsnest Harbor. The lot lines are still there. They still haven't been vacated, and that's one of the lawsuits coming. But I don't, I think by offering this tool, we offer a chance to offer something of value to those owners. They cannot vacate, they're suing us to vacate their lot lines. So estate lots on Crowsnest Harbor are not necessarily, are not an option. And starting over, we've been doing this for six or seven years, not four. We have started over three or four times. Some of the stuff you might remember, we did on committee, the 2.25 acres. Do we want a clarification on? That was something that came out of a committee you and I were on three or four years ago, five years ago. I mean, this is a, so I really think we've done a great job to come to this point. To put together 20 acres to be able to get past the logging, we had a version of this. One of the versions was you couldn't retire lots unless you had a contiguous 20 acres in Crowsnest Harbor, and we found it, it only allowed about 30% or 40% of Crowsnest Harbor to be, even, to apply for TDRs, which means even if you could somehow worm your way around the contiguous 20 acres, there's only a small portion of it would even be eligible to do that. There are 100 lot owners that are individual lot owners of record out there, in addition to the 250-odd lots that are owned by K&amp;M and the Marriott Corporation or whatever their corporation is. So I want to make sure that we asked for clarification on the 2.25 acres. Is that inherent in the 15.6 motion, or does it need to be stated? The five, the limit on the A1 density in the receiving area at 2.25 acres, is that clear?
Mr. Mill, and Mr. Chairman, that provision is in both ordinances, so that'd be covered if the board adopt either version.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman. I've said enough.
Any other discussion, Mr. Thomas?
When I came on the board three and a half years ago, this was in full swing, and it basically came to a grinding halt. And I served on one of those committees, and we kind of started from scratch again and said, okay, how can we salvage this? And the reason I volunteered for that is because driving around in my district on Caseon Road, Chapel Green Road, there's some beautiful farmland. And although the PDR program, not taking anything away from that, has been very successful at saving farms, it's very expensive to do, and currently, the only way we can fund that is roll back taxes. So the chances of buying all those farms someday is very, very small. So that was what gave me an initial interest in TDR. And for me, that's still my long-term goal with this, is to see this pilot be successful and then expand it out into some of the farmland. One of the versions we looked at was completely taking Crowsnest out of this because of the stigma that came with it. And I would have been happy to pass TDRs with not one single lot of Crowsnest in it to get to the end goal here. So this notion that if we don't save every single lot, that we shouldn't save at least a couple, I think is very dangerous, and we almost did that. We almost just said, sorry, Crowsnest, this isn't the solution. So for me, I've been on record many times saying, Crowsnest is not the reason that I support TDR. It happens to be a nice side benefit if we can save two properties there. I think we've accomplished something. But for me, the primary goal is the long-term saving of property all across the county, not just in Crowsnest. And I will add that there are some pretty good A2 farms in the sending area that we were proposing tonight to save as well. So I'm hoping that there's some of the first few that come forward to continue to farm their property and get a right from that, and we don't have to ever worry about a house being there ever again. The logging, you know, last year when this almost passed, actually passed, but we didn't do our tax amendment, there was two main issues, agricultural, or I'm sorry, architectural standards and logging. We got one of the two. If we wanted to put a rule in right now that says you can't log, we are not allowed to do that. I've asked that question five different angles. It's just not permitted. Unless staff's come up with a legal way to do it, we still cannot do that tonight. That's the only one thing I would change if I had the power to change it, but I don't. So for those reasons, I'll be in support again like I was in the past.
Ms. Sellers.
All right, TDRs. TDR has been a headache since the day we got on the board, huh, Meg? And it still seems to be a headache. And I have to agree with Bob. I support TDR in theory. I think it's a really good program, actually, and it works well in other states. Our planning staff does support it. We spoke to them. I am very hesitant because of Crowsnest Harbor. Actually, if I voted, if I vote against it, it's because I don't want Crowsnest Harbor in there. I think it is a partisan, political nasty issue, and I don't think it's good practice to legislate that way. I understand where you guys are coming from, but that seems to be the issue here instead of the planning aspects. I think there are some questions that I'd like to answer. One is the logging. Can we take that out? We cannot restrict that use.
Let me get to make sure. I'm a county attorney. I understood that we cannot, but-
Mr. Chairman, actually, that is a permissive provision. It's, the county has decided to allow that as a residual use, so it can be removed from the ordinance.
Okay, it can be removed.
So we can remove logging from the use? Well, I'd be in support of removing that as a use, as a residual use, and I would support it. I would also actually like to put forward a substitute motion to defer this until Tuesday and give us a week to all kind of take in what's been said tonight and come back in a week and vote on it.
I have a substitute motion to defer this till our March 3 meeting. Do I have a second? If I have a second, the substitute motion dies, went back to the original motion. Any further discussion? Ms. Bumpkin.
I'm like Laura. I've been on the high learning curve on TDRs for the last year, and I guess some of the concerns that I have, as we know, the school division's been going through redistricting, and when you look at where the receiving area is, it's right in the center of the county. And if we're looking at, you know, higher student generation yields there with apartments and townhomes, you know, that's going to cause additional impact on our schools. So we're going to be looking at the cost of elementary and probably a middle school in that area. And because of that, you know, I can't support, you know, any kind of a change to the comp plan. There are no proffers, you know, involved with TDRs. That's a concern that I have as well. And the other one would be, I lost my train of thought in my notes. Oh, I don't think we have enough transparency as it relates to, you know, all the lot owners on the receiving area and the sending area, and that concerns me greatly. And I think the public deserves to know who owns the lots in the receiving area as well as the sending area and who's in corporate. I mean, we know that the Marriott's own, you know, a number of the lots, but as far as the other 120 and 7K, who are the investors in 7K? And I feel that the taxpayers in Stafford County deserve to know that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Sterling.
Actually, the parks issue. 15-06 is put forward. It does or does not allow the parks as a residual use, the way the language is currently structured, or something have to be, a technical or clarifying amendment have to be added to that based on whatever was messed up?
As, as 15-06 is now writ and it does not allow park as a residual use for those properties that are two acres in the designated-
The change that would have to be made in order to make that a permissible is, I don't have it in any of the documents I'm looking at.
It's, it's inserting the word park as a residual use into Section 28360F. I can read it if you'd like. On page three of your staff report. On your staff report for the ordinance, if you look on page three.
So what's the answer?
As, as 15-06 is written now, it does not include that. You would need to insert the word park. Park purposes or agricultural purposes. You would just need to insert park purposes or-
I want that, that, of the cars. The inside of that. Oh, I want the, the, just about, park. So it's the end of that person, or the middle of it, right before the common agricultural purposes.
That's correct. Your third line down.
Cor, what is it you're trying?
Right now, the ordinance is, the planning commission put it forward, including the huge crow's nest as the severed properties for park purposes.
Putting that back in.
What kind of park purposes? Because there's different kinds of park purposes.
Community park.
Like a soccer field or a campground or?
Campground.
Corn lights, campground. Corn lights, fast food.
Well, it's passive in this case, I mean, it's, you know, boy scouts and grounds. It's not commercial campgrounds.
It's a, it's, there was language in there about what types of-
They add it up.
Well, the part of the Crow's Nest Harbor is right in the middle of a passive recreational park that's, you know, the, they don't allow camping.
If I understood correctly from your staff.
The microphone, Mr. Sterling.
If I understood correctly from staff, part of the ordinance talks about park purposes, but when they drafted this part, when the planning commission drafted this part, they forgot to put park purposes in there, and so it messes that up.
Add it in. Make a recommendation.
Oh, that's what I was suggesting.
Who's this clarifying?
The maker, will you accept a friendly amendment to add park purposes in that section?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Along those same lines, like I said, the only negative for me was the logging, so if it's, now we've decided now that it's as simple as restricting that use, I would absolutely love that to be a friendly amendment, as long as somebody down front still says they can get us there with that language.
County attorney has ruled that we can use that language.
Then I amend my motion twice, and you're the second?
Any other comments? Mr. Cavalier, you okay? And this is, make sure I'm clear here. I just have one thing for the county attorney. This is 15-05, correct?
06.
06, I'm sorry. I apologize. 06. This is passed tonight. It still does not go into effect until the comp plan amendment's passed. Is that correct?
This would amend, if you pass this, this would amend what we have currently on the books, then you should take up the plan amendment tonight as well.
Suppose the plan amendment fails.
Well, you still have an incomplete, uh, uh, program.
Can't do anything.
One element's gone.
Can't do anything.
You got an ordinance, you, you're right back where you are right now.
So what we're doing tonight, if we pass this, we're just updating the ordinance we have.
Oh, you're doing a good job on the ordinance, but you've got about 10 days, you've got about 10 days to go, or you're not going to have a, an opportunity for, until it goes back down again and comes back up.
Okay.
We don't want to do that.
You got until March 10th to do it.
Okay.
We have that.
Is any further discussion?
Sure.
No further discussion, cast your vote. Oh, tally the vote.
Yep.
Motion passes six to one.
What's the next?
The next is item number 22, Planning and Zoning, Consider a Comp Plan Amendment Regarding Transfer of Development Rights. Mr. Milliday.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes four to three. Is there any other, is there any other business on the agenda? Seeing none, hearing none, meeting adjourned.